Good evening. The July 19, 2021 Legislative Meeting of the Anorondle County Council is now in session. And I've forgotten my gavel in the office, so sorry about that. It's okay. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Once again, welcome back to the chambers. Please note that we are abiding by the recommended guidance of the CDC and the county executive regarding masks. If you feel safer wearing your mask, please do not hesitate to do so. It will be helpful if everyone who speaks would continue to identify yourselves when you speak Zoom-style to my colleagues. Please also make sure you say your name when making a motion or offering a second, as this helps keep our record clear. I'd also remind my colleagues of the need to be recognized before you speak, whether that's using your flag, or your hand, or I think we've continued to practice, my head does swivel left to right, and I can try to see that you want to speak. And of course, if you do leave up a flag, I will call you on your stale flag. And with that, please stand for the invocation led by Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. If everybody would join me for a moment before we say the invocation, to take a moment of silence to remember two county public servants that we lost this weekend, Candace C.W. Antoine and Richard B. Dick Lad. We'll have some resolutions at the appropriate time, but I just think we should take a moment right now to remember them. Thank you. Let us pray together, each of us according to our individual beliefs. We are thankful for this day that you've given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we will now open our invitation to audience. Do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission of testimony through the online testimony tool that has been shared with the council and added to the record.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Your remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have a sign-up sheet, and the first person I have listed on it is Mr. Stephen Wadi. Please come forward. Hello. When you're ready, please state your name and address for the record. The timer will be there in front of you.
Hello, my name is Stephen Wadi. I'm speaking on behalf of Anorondle County NAACP President Jacqueline Alsop. Address is P.O. Box 6210, Annapolis, Maryland. She would be in attendance, but she is currently on a trip with the Caucus of African-American Leaders, highlighting recent incidents of police brutality in Ocean City. Today, the NAACP is concerned about the July 15 decision, three members of the Police Trial Board to allow Officer Daniel Reynolds to remain as an officer in the Anorondle County Police Department. Trial Board determined that Officer Reynolds used excessive force and was discourteous towards Daniel Gerald during the traffic stop that was conducted on February 14, 2019. And thanks to the video taken by a neighbor who witnessed the incident, the community was able to see the officer in action. Officer Reynolds acted with the same caution difference toward Daniel Gerald as Officer Derek Chauvin did towards George Floyd. Officer Reynolds told Mr. Gerald to stop acting like a bee and told him to shut the F up when he said he couldn't breathe. Even more problematic is the fact that the police chief has decided to accept the Police Trial Board's decision, although she may recommend a stronger penalty from the hearing board if she so chooses. When the Maryland State Legislature was debating a new police reform law, she stated that chiefs should have more power to hire and fire. This is an instance where she should use her power to show zero tolerance towards the use of excessive force and show that she and the county executive who hired her are serious about rooting out bad cops from the force. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wadi. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at Invitation to Audience? Please come forward. Seeing no forward movement in the audience, the Invitation to Audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Councilman Pruski, so moved.
Allison Pickard, Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of July 6, 2021.
Minutes of legislative session, day number 15. The meeting was called to order by Chair Lacy at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance given by Ms. Pickard. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in the Anorondle Center in Annapolis, Maryland. There were approximately 20 people in the audience.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 6, 2021?
Rodvian, so moved.
Volkey, Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of July 6, 2021 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6821, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control Authority to Impound Tethering of Dogs. Bill Number 6921, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Capital Budget and Programs Supplementary Appropriations and Fund Transfer. Bill Number 7021, An Ordnance Concerning Snug Harbor Waterways Improvement District Modification. Bill Number 7121, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registration, Swimming Pools, Pool Operator and Lifeguard Licenses.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 3721, Resolution Approving the Nomination of a Member to the Anorondle County Human Relations Commission. Resolution Number 3821, Resolution Expressing the County Council's Sympathies and Condolences to the Family of Candace C.W. Antoine and to her colleagues on the Board of Education. Resolution Number 3921, Resolution Expressing Condolences and Sympathies on the Death of Richard B. Dick Lad.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will vote on Resolution Numbers 3821 and 3921 first this evening. Then we will proceed with the agenda, and we'll vote on Resolution Number 3721 at the conclusion of our meeting. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3821.
Resolution Number 3821, Resolution Expressing the County Council's Sympathies and Condolences to the Family of Candace C.W. Antoine and to her colleagues on the Board of Education.
Thank you. This resolution has been introduced by the entire council, and because I represent the district that was served by Ms. Antoine, I'm going to read the resolution into the Whereas on July 16, 2021, Anorondle County lost one of its champions for public education with the sudden passing of Candace C.W. Antoine. And whereas Ms. Antoine was the first person elected to represent District 1 on the Board of Education for Anorondle County, serving a six-year term that began on December 3, 2018. And whereas Ms. Antoine was a committed advocate for all students in Anorondle County with a deep passion for equity in education and accessible, quality education that meets the needs of every student. And whereas Ms. Antoine demonstrated her commitment through her hard work on the board's policy and equity committees, as well as her collaborative work with several committees of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. And whereas Ms. Antoine was also a U.S. Navy veteran who advocated for military families throughout Anorondle County. And whereas Ms. Antoine was a devoted mother and member of the community whose life of service is a testament for others who strive for the best in personal and community life. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Anorondle County, Maryland, that it hereby expresses its sincere sympathy and heartfelt condolences on the passing of Candace C.W. Antoine, whose death is a profound loss to her son, her family and friends, her colleagues, and all of Anorondle County. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the family of Candace C.W. Antoine as an expression of the gratitude felt by the county council for her contributions to Anorondle County, in particular District 1, and of the high esteem and affection in which she was held by all. Would anyone else like to make any comments, including the administration, if you wish?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for those beautiful words. I want to share the county executives' sentiments. He and I talked the other night when we heard the news. He said, you know, nobody was more laser-focused on helping children, helping families, helping fellow veterans than Candace. She's a passionate advocate. She mastered the art of civility, demonstrated respect, and carefully thought through every word and every action she delivered. Our thoughts and prayers go to her young son, Joey, and all those that knew and love her. On a personal note, I got to know her a little bit in 2018, and I'm better for having known her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Anyone else of my colleagues? Go ahead, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express my condolences to the family and express what a huge loss this is for Anorondle County and especially District 1. I got to know her over the past few years while she was running for office and while she was serving the county in a very difficult job, in a very difficult time. She did it with grace, she did it with humility, and she did it with the best attempt to hear everyone and move the best interests of our young people forward, and she will be very sorely missed.
Well said. Last chance, anyone? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3821.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3821 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3921.
Resolution Number 3921, Resolution Expressing Condolences and Sympathies on the Death of Richard B. Dick Lad.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was unfortunately a very sad weekend here in Anorondle County. I too am going to read into record the resolution, 3921, sending and expressing condolences and sympathies. Resolution Expressing Condolences and Sympathies on the Death of Richard B. Dick Lad. Whereas on Sunday, July 18, 2021, Anorondle County lost one of its distinguished former council members with the passing of Richard B. Dick Lad. And whereas Dick Lad served as the council member representing District 5 in Anorondle County from 2010 to 2014. And whereas during his time on the county council, he served as chair from December 6, 2010, to December 5, 2011, and vice chair from December 2, 2013, to December 1, 2014. And whereas before serving on the county council, he served as deputy undersecretary of the Army, served a staff to U.S. Senate Appropriations Committee, and had been a member of the Army Science Board and a member of the Army Educational Advisory Committee. And whereas he was a veteran of the U.S. Army, having served as a helicopter pilot in Vietnam, and was the recipient of four Bronze Stars and 16 Air Medals for his service. And whereas he was a trustworthy, welcoming gentleman and a passionate legislator, admired by colleagues and respected on both sides of the aisle. And whereas he was an optimistic but pragmatic and persuasive advocate for District 5 and Anorondle County. And whereas Dick Lad was a man of great integrity, faith, service, love for his children, grandchildren, and his wife, Sabra. Now therefore, it be resolved by the County Council of Anorondle County, Maryland, that it hereby expresses its sincere sympathy and heartfelt condolences on the passing of Richard B. Dick Lad, whose death is a profound loss to the county council, his family, and friends in Anorondle County. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Lad family as an expression of the deep admiration felt for Dick Lad by the county council and appreciation for his contributions to the county.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Do any of my colleagues or Mr. Barron wish to offer any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I'll read County Executive's statement expressing his condolences to the family of Councilman Lad. Councilman Lad led a life of service in the U.S. Army as a dedicated helicopter pilot, as a staff member in the U.S. Senate, and deputy undersecretary of the Army, and of course, as a member of the county council. I wish his family my sympathies upon their loss, and thank them on behalf of the county for Councilman Lad's contributions to our community. Thank you for your nice words, Councilwoman Fiedler. County Executive wishes to express his condolences to the family of Councilman Lad.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I remember Dick Lad calling me up at 7:00 in the morning or 7:00 at night to talk with passion over a whole bunch of different topics. I can remember being on the phone with him forever, talking about private roads and how that was going to blend into our infrastructure in the future. And he was just so passionate about everything and very caring. I'll miss him.
Thank you, Ms. Schuet. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So obviously, I have a relationship or had a relationship with Mr. Lad. He had a life full of service and was very passionate about infrastructure specifically, and I will quote, because this was a quote that was said at almost every conversation I had with him. "The Route 50 corridor from Interstate 97 to the 301 split." That was a topic of conversation every time we chatted. He challenged me, he made me think beyond the here and now, and he made me a better councilperson.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Anyone else? That's a live flag, right?
That's a live flag.
Okay.
Nathan Volkey, District 3. I had the opportunity to know Mr. Lad when he was on the council, and I was on the Republican Central Committee, and we worked together quite a bit. And he was passionate about a great many things. And then when I got on the council, similar to Councilwoman Fiedler, he would contact me regularly to talk about transportation and infrastructure, over and over again. Route 50 certainly, but he also liked to talk about Route 97 and the corridor out there and the access to roads. So he was an amazing person. I'm lucky to have known him. Four Bronze Stars, that says quite a lot right there. He was quite a person. So Sabra, if you're watching, he will be missed, and we send you all the best.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3921.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3921 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And because I'm sure both Ms. Antoine and former Councilman Lad would want us to get right down to business, we're going to take a deep breath and go on with our agenda. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5721 as amended.
Bill Number 5721, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anorondle County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For members of the administration, we do have a limited seating up here, so I'm going to ask Ms. McQuaid, Mr. Gregory, and Mr. Hen to join me. If Ms. Blair Klausmeyer and Mr. Teroux and Ms. McVeigh can hang back here. If you're needed, we'll call you up, and I'll give you my seat, because you all are the experts. Former Councilman Trumbauer and current budget officer ably introduced this bill before the council in my absence at the last meeting. You all amended it. We believe the bill is ready to go after we attach one quick technical amendment that corrects a calculation error, which we'll discuss at the appropriate time. As a reminder, the numbers were amended at the last meeting to reflect the final numbers approved in the FY '22 budget. This is the annual bond bill that the administration brings before the council after we finalize the budget. With that, our experts here are able to answer any questions, and if you have anything to add. If not, we're ready for questions and to bring the technical amendment.
Do any of my colleagues have questions? Okay, let's open the public hearing on Bill Number 5721 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions, online or otherwise.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing. I believe we do not have anyone signed up in advance. If anyone wishes to speak, please come forward now, and you'll have two minutes to tell us about what you think about the bond bill. No? Okay. The public hearing on Bill Number 5721 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5721 as amended.
Bill Number 5721, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anorondle County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2. This technical amendment corrects a calculation error on Page 1 of Exhibit 1A.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I think the amended amendment speaks for itself. It's a correction and a calculation error. The numbers in the bill are correct.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Councilman Pruski.
And a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion of this highly technical amendment? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 is adopted.
Thank you. And because Amendment Number 2 was a technical amendment, Bill Number 5721 as amended can be voted on this evening. Any last chance for words? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5721 as amended.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5721 as amended is passed.
Thank you to the panel. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5921 as amended.
Bill Number 5921, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Traffic, Vehicles on Public Sidewalks.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Again, I have a big group with me, so I'm going to ask Mr. Beckier and Major Simpson to join me, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. We got folks from Office of Transportation and Central Services, if there are any questions. But we are, I think this bill is ready for passage. I will say, this was another bill that was heard and amended at the previous meeting. I regret my absence. This is a bill that actually I worked on a little bit with the Bike Commission, so we're excited to bring this bill forward. It makes sense for us to have the ability for bicyclists to operate safely, and there are parts of the county where a sidewalk is the much safer option. So we hope the council will pass this bill tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5921 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission through the online testimony tool that was shared with the entire council and added to the record.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing as far as people being signed up here. I have at least one sign up, and if others have decided they wish to speak, then please also come down to the podium. Mr. John Coran. Well, the table now rather than the podium, as we took that microphone away. Mr. Coran, I know you know, two minutes. Please begin by stating your name and address for the record. Thank you, Mr. Coran. Would anyone else like to speak on this bill? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 5921 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5921 as amended.
Bill Number 5921, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Traffic, Vehicles on Public Sidewalks.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited to vote in favor of this bill this evening. I think it's a good day when bikers, young and old, can be in compliance with county law, including the three Fiedler boys. So, thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. I'm just, as an avid biker myself, who biked to these chambers tonight, I'm grateful to see that the county is reflecting what the city has done and acknowledging that sometimes it really is safer to be on the sidewalk. We just all have to be courteous to each other when, you know, we're dealing with folks on two legs instead of two wheels. So thank you very much for everyone who was involved in creating this bill.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Mr. Barron, I'd emailed you about this, so hopefully this isn't surprising, but I just want to verify. I'd gotten an email from a constituent who saw a piece on the news about dirt bikes in Anorondle County and possibly those being on trails. I just want to make sure that nothing that we're doing with this bill would touch or impact that in any way. I just want to clarify that publicly so that I can go back to her and tell her all as well.
Pete Barron with the administration. You are correct. This bill does not allow motorized dirt bikes on sidewalks. And as to that constituents' question as it relates to that news story, we cannot track down who the person claims they were talking to. So I will say for the record, the administration is not currently in talks to allow dirt bikes on county trails.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. I myself got a question about that today, so. And apparently, so did Ms. Hare. Word spreads. Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5921 as amended.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5921 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6321.
Bill Number 6321: An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Critical Area Overlay.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. Again, I've got a big group, so I've got a couple of folks hanging out in the front rows if they're needed. But joining me at the table is Ms. Krenitz from OPZ and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. We have our DCAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Environmental Policy Director, Matt Johnston, and our OPZ Director, Stephen Kyzglar, here in the audience. To remind everybody about where this bill comes from, in 2008, legislation was passed at the state level that required the state to work cooperatively with local governments to update the critical area maps. This legislation directed DNR to prepare a statewide base map that includes state-determined shoreline and landward boundary of tidal wetlands and a digitally-generated geo-referenced 1,000-foot critical area boundary. Bill 6321 adopts new critical area maps prepared and approved by the Maryland Critical Area Commission. The maps are to be kept and maintained by the Department of Planning and Zoning. Members of OPC's critical area team are here with me to help answer any questions. With that, we ask that you move the bill tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Barron, I believe Madam Legislative Council raised this issue for us a little bit earlier, and I'm just curious. The grandfathering clause that's in this bill is different than what we typically see in that this one is tied to the date the permit is issued as opposed to the date someone submits an application. Was there a specific reason or rationale for that that I'm just not aware of?
I'm going to ask Ms. Krenitz and maybe somebody from Office of Law. I want to thank the council members that did share that question with me.
Is it working? So the reason it's issued instead of completed, the commission actually wasn't really in favor of grandfathering. The fact of the matter is, the line is what the line is, and we know these maps came to us in the beginning of 2020 so that we know that this is actually where the 1,000-foot line is and it's where we should be implementing today. So putting it to a point of issuing the permit just kind of limited it as opposed to completion and the permit, you know, the project is going on for quite some time. So it's get the application in. We're trying, it is a quick turnaround, so we're trying to have it issued, have you be able to start your project, but it's not something that can drag on forever with extensions and whatever. So it's to implement the line as it is as quickly as possible.
And if I may, Pete Barron with the administration, it is correct that property owners were notified in 2019 of any changes greater than 1%.
Right. So in 2019, anyone with greater than 1% was notified by mail. They were invited to attend one of three public meetings so that they could actually meet with commission members and have what these changes meant explained to them, how it would affect their properties, both people going into and coming out of the critical area and how it would affect their projects. So people have been more than aware, and most people have, their applications actually reflect the new line, knowing that it's coming so that they weren't going to get caught short and not be able to finish their projects.
Thank you, Ms. Krenitz. Is anyone else? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 1,000-foot line, is that all that the new technology did was kind of narrow down to where exactly that was? Or was there any adjustment to the map after the new software spit out where the line was?
No, it was just to, so the old technology, you can imagine was old. It didn't take things like tide or time of day or anything into consideration. Our maps were actually drawn with a Sharpie, so the line itself is pretty wide. So it also took into account the fact that different counties have different levels of technology and ability. So in the past, maps wouldn't match up. You couldn't, if you had a boundary between two counties and their abilities were different, they didn't match up. So this did a couple of things. It used technology to create a very accurate line that takes, uses LiDAR, so it was better at figuring out where those tidal boundaries were. It took things like tide and time of day, shadows, those kind of things, all into effect. And at the end of this, when all the jurisdictions have gone through it, there'll be one Maryland iMap of the critical area. So if there were a statewide project, it would be better coordination because everybody's information would be based on the same technology.
Thank you, Ms. Krenitz. Anyone else? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Thank you for that explanation. One question that I had a specific spot in my district that looks to be the most significant change that I can find is up off of Fort Smallwood Road on Kembo Road there, which is what leads back to the Cox Creek dredge facility back over there. There's a significant change in area. There's a lot of area that looks like under the current boundary. It's in the critical area, and the line has been pushed significantly back, so it's getting closer to the water. I've got it on my screen. I don't know if that's helpful for you or not. I can show it to you.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Yeah, I was sure you would know exactly what I was talking about. So I'm just curious what the reason was for that. Is that because of the large Sharpie? Was it because somebody didn't understand what they were doing when they drew it before? That seems like the big change.
More than likely, those small, look like ponds.
Yeah, little pockets.
They were probably mapped as tidal on the first map.
Okay.
And the current technology recognized that they weren't actually tidal.
Gotcha.
There were a couple instances of that. Otter Pond on Gibson Island was one of them. And we found that most of the changes on our maps were at headwater conditions where in both directions, the tidal line in a wetland situation might have been a little bit off or situations like that where either it was an error or there's been sedimentation and the pond is no longer tidal or something has occurred that has changed whether the ponds or small lakes or small features like that are tidal or non-tidal.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I appreciate that. My only concern is when you get outside of that line and now the development possibility opens up for that area in a way that's not open now. So, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6321. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did receive one submission of testimony that was submitted online. It was shared with the whole council and added to the record.
Thank you. We do have at least three people who have decided to come before us and speak tonight. So I'll call all three of you, which is unlike Zoom meetings, I'm going to call all three of you to come up, and then we'll go in order. I have Mr. Britt Griswold, William Marshall, and Paul Burdette. If you would please come forward, and of course, you will each have two minutes, then please state your name and address for our record. The clock will be there in front of you.
I am representing the community of Amberly tonight. We live at the headwaters of Whitehall Creek. I live at 823 Holly Drive East in Annapolis, Maryland 21409. I'm here to tell you a tale about the head of Whitehall Creek. Whitehall Creek is on the Broadneck Peninsula near Cape St. Clair interchange of Route 50. It has in fact had enhanced protection under the critical area law with a 1,400-foot arc surrounding the headwaters. This was an exception allowed by the original critical area law, but due to lack of documentation for the exception, other than the approval of the map showing it, it has allowed repeated attacks on the protection of this headwaters. Developers and government have tipped away at land use restrictions, and they finally settled on a new designated line that we all in Amberly knew was incorrect and flawed. At the time of the original designation, this area was wooded with a single-family house on the property, and woods protecting the marshes and streamlands were leading to open water. Even with this line expansion that we now have, it is less than the original designation of the CA. So we have a new map, and the residents of Amberly have long known and fought for in court is there is more critical area than predicted by those that want development. This should not surprise anyone who's been paying attention to this land. But flying in the face of the purpose of the critical area law, the county is proposing designating this expanded portion of this critical area as IDA, Intense Development Area. This designation flies in the face of the purpose of the critical area law. It's inconsistent with the underlying zoning of RLD, Low Density Residential, one house per five acres. And this new IDA designation would open up this land to a possibility of 80% coverage of parking lot for the one small acre commercially-zoned area right next to the McDonald's. There really is no compelling reason to sacrifice the still undeveloped portion of this land to intense development, and we're not sure how it happened.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, hi, I'm Will Marshall. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Griswold in Amberly also, 848 Holly Drive South is our address. We enjoy living on a beautiful part of Maryland coastline and I'm here because I understand it is now under threat. When we moved into the neighborhood, we understood I'm probably the second generation of Amberly residents who have been fighting to protect the headwaters of Whitehall Creek, and I'm just here to help pick up the mantle. Mr. Griswold appears to be correct that we could see 80% impervious coverage of a piece of land which really does feed into the headwater of Whitehall Creek, which feeds into Whitehall Bay, which feeds into the Chesapeake Bay. So it's not just a local concern. I think there's a larger concern as well, but we're in a position to do something about it, and that's why I'm here and appealing to our council and my councilmen to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Mr. Burdette?
Yes, I'm also a resident of Amberly, and I'm here to second Britt's comments. Brief history, this portion of Whitehall Creek was significantly damaged by the State Highway Administration back in the late '80s when they built the interchange over Route 50. Amberly fought for almost 20 years to have the state admit they had damaged the creek and to repair and restore the headwaters, which they did. Part of the agreement was that Amberly would also participate financially, and we as current homeowners are still being assessed annually for our participation. Subsequent to that, we've all known that the mapping of the critical areas there was incorrect, and thankfully, it has been corrected. My question really, and I don't want to be redundant in what Britt has said, but if the new mapping shows that this area in question is now part of, the underlying zoning is now residential low density, why is it being mapped as Intense Development Area? It really makes no sense. We've gone all this effort to protect these headwaters. It's clearly now shown that this should be residential low density, and for some reason, it's being classified as Intense Development Area, which will just add to runoff to the creek. I know this is a small part of a much larger bill, but I really think the state and the county has already put money into this creek, and I think it would be a shame to just see it, you know, go ahead as Intense Development Area. So I second Britt's comments, and I hope that there can be some reassessment of this. Thank you.
Thank you all. Does anyone else wish to speak on Bill Number 6321? Come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 6321 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6321.
Yes, Madam Secretary, I need to correct the record. I apologize. There was no online testimony submitted for 6321. I was looking at another bill, so my apologies. Bill Number 6321: An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Critical Area Overlay.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just following up on the testimony, we, I'm sorry?
I said, "thank you." I was hoping somebody would ask.
Perfect. So I'm trying to figure out because are we just moving a line consistent with the 1,000 feet, or are we also changing underlying designations of IDA, RCA, LDA, et cetera?
Thank you. And thank the gentlemen for coming here and advocating for a very important resource in the county. The state recommended the change to IDA, but underlying zoning governs, so it will still be one per five acres. I'm going to turn it over to the experts. Maybe Mr. Johnston or Ms. Krenitz can help us put some clarity on this issue, because I know we became aware of the issue earlier today, and they've been digging into it. So I'm going to let them speak, whoever would like to.
Want me to?
Sure, sure.
So when we originally started working on the maps and the designations, this project was already in, or this site was already in with a development proposal on it. So that was one of the factors that went into having it be an IDA. What happens, the line changes, but if the line expands, some sort of designation has to be assigned to that new property. So we had an application in that was being reviewed. There is IDA on either side of this property and RCA between it and the shoreline. So it becomes a question of do you expand RCA or do you connect IDA? And there are a lot of things that go into it. So the RLD regulations would still be applicable, and this is a stripe. It could have gone either way in the discussions, but the final determination as supported by the Critical Area Commission was that it become IDA.
May I ask one follow-up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. If this similar situation exists in other areas of the county and we just haven't heard testimony on a specific parcel of the state has recommended either IDA or LDA or whatever they might have recommended, and there is a different underlying zoning, in all circumstances, the underlying zoning will still govern?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the panel for coming forward. I know that I have discussed this with Mr. Johnston, and if you could just, for the record, if this bill were to not pass this evening, we would then be required to ask the commission to go back and redo the map. Is that correct?
Thank you, Matt Johnston for the administration. Yes, that is correct.
And this council does not have the authority to amend the map, is basically what I'm getting to.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also to clarify for the panel that was here, we do have the authority to make the final decision on the underlying zoning when it comes back to us. I'm not sure what stage they are, but the underlying zoning right now is, for that parcel?
Is RLD.
RLD, okay. So it is, and the zoning, it's what it should be, and the council has the ultimate say on any change that would happen.
If it were proposed, yes.
If it were proposed, okay.
That is correct.
Doesn't look like it. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6321.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6321 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6421.
Bill Number 6421: An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes Bill Number 6421, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis.
Mr. Barron, when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I do have a panel that will fit at our small table today, Ms. McQuade from Finance and Ms. Kenny, but I assure you, this panel is mighty and this bill is very important. Bill 6421 approves a new pilot agreement between the county and the housing authority of the city of Annapolis to replace the one currently in place. The new agreement is necessary to cover some housing authority properties which are being operated under a new form of ownership that is not covered by the existing pilot agreement. The new agreement continues the terms of the original agreement and requires payments of $1 for each property within the county. The new agreement also aligns the current, the county's pilot with the city of Annapolis' pilot and requires the payment of 5% of shelter rents to the county for certain properties. The team here is happy to answer any questions, but we ask that you move this bill this evening.
Are there any questions from the council or comments? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question relates to Exhibit A on page number four. Paragraph 3D, "In the event that these various projects in the future become subject to the RAD process, payment shall be made in accordance with Paragraph 2," which I believe refers to a $1 payment. I'm just curious if someone can explain to me, under what circumstances or how they would become subject to that RAD process and kind of what the likelihood is that that would happen.
That sounds like a question for law.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. I can answer that only in, in general terms, because that is financing that would be done by HACA and the third-party entities that may take over. There is a footnote in the legislative summary, footnote number one on page three, that does describe the RAD program, which is a financing program that they, that they undergo. I do believe, based on some things that I've heard from HACA, that it may be possible that some of these properties may undergo that financing, but I don't know when or how probable that is.
Would that come back before the council?
No, it would not, because this paragraph of the pilot would allow that to convert to the dollar pilot if they did convert the, the properties to that financing.
Okay, and in that instance, then, the council...
Ms. Hare?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Just, just checking, but also, please identify yourself when you ask a question. You can go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. Jessica Hare, District 7. Okay, so in that instance, then, am I correct in understanding that the county would lose out on that 5% of the shelter rents and instead would just get a dollar?
That's right. The county would get a dollar in that situation, for the record, Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. But again, these properties are tax-exempt under law, so the 5% is really in addition to what we would, we would get under law anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the projects in question are in my district, I just really ask my colleagues to support this. I think it's impossible to understate the importance of affordable housing in Anarundel County, and these provide an enormous amount, despite the fact that there's still a pretty significant waiting list for affordable housing of all types, for all ages, for all different types of groups of people, even with what exists. Without this, we would have, I think, even if, even if you don't personally benefit or, you know, feel particularly inclined to support affordable housing, the impact that would have on traffic alone would be enormous. People would have to move out of the county, move to further, further places and, and use limited public transportation or be driving into the county. And so this is really important, that people have housing that's near where they work. If you ever shop at a grocery store, if you ever shop at a CVS, in a way, you rely on affordable housing, because the folks that work in the registers at those places and that stock the shelves rely on affordable housing, and so you benefit from them having a place to live that's close to where they work. And of course, everyone, in my humble opinion, everyone deserves to have a roof over their head, and I hope that you will support this, because this really is critically important in District 6. So I ask for your support.
Anyone else? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6421. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions of testimony.
We'll now open the public hearing. I do not have anyone signed up in advance. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak, please come forward now. Seeing no movement that I would think is related, unless sir you would like to speak on Bill 6421. Okay. The public hearing on Bill Number 6421 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6421.
Bill Number 6421, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just want to be clear, then, this, this pilot agreement, and it is only, it is limited to these few projects, right? If, if any other projects wanted to come before with a similar ownership change or a possibility of getting into that RAD program, it would be a separate agreement, right? This doesn't kind of have a blanket effect.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. That's correct. This would only apply to the properties that are owned by the housing authority of the city of Annapolis.
Jessica Hare, District 7, but, but I guess my question is, there are several enumerated in here. Would it apply to any new ones that the city of Annapolis, you know, 20 years from now may have, or would it be limited to the ones that are enumerated here?
No, the, it does apply to all the properties that they own or that they would own in the future.
Anyone else? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it would be an amazing miracle if Annapolis were able to construct any additional affordable housing with the land value in the city as it is, so I would just speculate that that's probably unlikely, although I wish it were likely.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6421.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 6421 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6521.
Bill Number 6521, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development and Zoning, Glen Burney Sustainable Community Overlay Area.
Our second overlay of the evening. Ms. Pickard?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District 2. Before you is Bill Number 6521. It's a, some of what a fix-it to the overlay bill that we all passed unanimously back on September 8th. As projects and questions have come up regarding the implementation of the bill, there were a couple little minor things we needed to address, and if I, we worked on this bill a while ago, so one of them was, we did not, we did not grandfather any current redevelopment projects already in the pipeline in the mapped area in the original bill. This bill would allow redevelopment projects to move forward that have not accessed some of the incentives in, in the, in the current overlay and just move on like they would a regular project. So they wouldn't have to go back and start over with a concept plan and, and all those things. So they can continue along in the process they were already undergoing. And then people moving forward, projects could choose to access the overlay in the mapped area or just proceed as a regular project. That's part of it. The other, there was a fix about just some wording regarding the concept plan process and meetings, and I'll let the administration add to anything that I've missed, and we can answer questions if, if they come up. I, I would like everybody to pass the bill if we could tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I think the sponsor of the bill and the administration are in agreement. We would like to see this bill pass this evening. Joining me at the table is Ms. Miller from OPZ and our DCAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes. We have our team here, Mr. Johnston, our environmental policy director, our planning and zoning officer, Mr. Steve Kaisigler, and our, from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer, waiting in the wings if there are additional questions. But the sponsor, I think, hit the nail on the head. This is a fix-it to clean up some technical issues around the Glen Burney overlay bill, which this council passed unanimously last year. So we hope that we'll be able to move these rather technical fixes forward tonight. I want to thank the sponsor for working with the administration. It did take a little while. It was, I think, coming from sort of the practical implications of implementing the overlay bill, and, and we're hopeful this will address a couple of issues that have cropped up over the last year and help spur smart growth in the Glen Burney area.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Ms. Pickard?
And just to add, it is very likely, as we, as we see more projects come through the overlay, that there will be additional tweaks. It's just the nature of the beast, and as we look at redevelopment in Anarundel County and move beyond the provisions in this overlay and look to maybe replicate them in other parts of the county, hopefully, we'll learn project by project, and we'll start to get, get the process down, implementing it down, and I know the administration fully supports redevelopment, and we'll be working with projects to make sure they happen quickly. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? Other than whether a Sharpie was used to draw your overlay? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. That was not my question, but thank you. So in reading this bill, I just want to understand exactly what is it that's changing? I see a number of references to another code section. Why is it that we need to reference that? What was the failure in referencing it previously? Why are we adding that? And then further, it looks like it really adds in this provision about a revised concept plan, so the idea that if a plan is submitted and it's revised, you can sort of keep going on with the revised concept plan. So I'm, I'm just not clear, I thought there was some sort of a grandfathering component, at least that's what it kind of sounded like to me, projects that were in the pipeline now sort of going back and being able to access this as a tool. I'm not quite sure where that is in this bill, so maybe I can get a little more explanation on the details.
Pete Barron with the administration. First, for the record, no Sharpies were used last year. I'm going to ask Ms. Miller and, and Ms. Rhodes to weigh in on, on the questions. Councilman Volkey, I think they're important.
Hi, thanks. You're good? Lynn Miller, Office of Planning and Zoning. Let's see, first regarding the concept plan, this is a new step in the development review process that was added specifically for use in this overlay, and as the bill's written now, there's sort of two parts to that. There's a concept plan submittal initially, and then there was a revised concept plan, which would address OPZ and other reviewing agency comments on the initial concept plan. You know, after discussing it further, we think that it's, it's very possible that there would be some cases where the original concept plan would be straightforward enough during the review process, that we wouldn't necessarily need a revised concept plan. In other words, the applicant could go straight to the next step, which would be SDP. So what this amendment does is it still allows OPZ to request a revised concept plan if we feel one is needed to help iron out some details, but it doesn't make it a mandatory step. So that way, it will save the applicant time if it's not needed. So that's that one. And the other one really is, as Ms. Pickard explained, it really relates to making it clear that use of the overlay is optional and not mandatory. You know, for a new project coming in, I, I can't really think of a lot of instances where a new applicant wouldn't want to use the overlay, because it seems like it's, for the most part, going to be to their benefit. But as was stated earlier, our concern was that there could be some projects in the works now, even if they hadn't been submitted yet, the developer could have already done all the engineering and prepared your typical preliminary and SDP, and we wouldn't want them to have to go back and start over to use this process if they didn't find it beneficial. So those are the reasons for the, the two changes that are being proposed.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add, as my memory is being jogged about why we drafted this bill so long ago, anyways, we did not want to add additional steps. The whole point of the Glen Burney Sustainable Community Overlay is to incentivize and break down the barriers to redevelopment, and so as we see a concept plan being presented to the community in a community meeting with OPZ present, and as they move and groove around different parts of the plan, and the, the community brings in ideas and, and they bounce off of each other, they can incorporate those ideas and changes into their next, into their SDP, and then they have to come back. I mean, the key to this whole idea is they're coming back to, to a community meeting at final, at the final plan, and so the community will see if their changes were adopted and how. So it's not like, but we are, we don't want to keep putting up barriers to redevelopment, and so this was just one of the little hiccups we found and wanted to clarify the language, so. But we are, the bill in itself has two bites at the apple for the public to look and see, hey, did the, did the project sponsors, did the developers take our concerns into consideration? And they're going to come back at the end stage to make sure that they were addressed. So thank you.
Anyone else have a question at the moment? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6521. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions of testimony.
Okay. I believe we do not have anyone who signed up to speak on the bill, but if anyone would like to, please stand up and come on down. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 6521 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6521.
Bill Number 6521, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development and Zoning, Glen Burney Sustainable Community Overlay Area.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6521.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6521 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6621.
Bill Number 6621, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Parking, Non-Residential Outdoor Lighting and Sinage, Prohibited Signs and Temporary Signs.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. This bill deals primarily with wind signs, the flutter flags that you see. I have a small business in my district. It's a really cute place, set back a little bit from the road, not otherwise part of a shopping center, who had these flutter flags outside to let them know that kind of after COVID, they had really kind of just barely made it through. They were open for business, and they, they wanted folks to come in. And shortly after they put them up, they were told they had to take them down, because they're prohibited in the county. But less than a quarter mile down the road, multiple other businesses have these flags, and so doing a little bit of digging, come to find out, it's a complaint-driven system, and so it can be very unevenly applied just by virtue of the way the system is set up. And in this particular instance, the small business is kind of really getting hurt by it, while, you know, the gas station down the street and kind of the big business is untouched. So I talked to Planning and Zoning and the administration, and I want to say thank you to all the back and forth that's gone on and the collaborative effort there, and we kind of talked about how can we make a situation where, you know, if folks want and need these signs to let people know their business is here, that, you know, and they're open and they're looking for, for clientele, how can they do that without also kind of cluttering up the landscape, so to speak, with too many signs? And so back and forth with some, with some language, the bill you have in front of you, it actually, a good portion of the language comes straight out of a work group on the it actually, a good portion of the language comes straight out of a work group on the sign code that was convened a number of years ago, and kind of the definition of temporary sign, and this, that, and the other. So ultimately, this bill would allow a business to have a limited number of temporary signs for no more than two 60-day periods during the year. And it would still be complaint-driven, but, you know, that would give folks an opportunity to say if they have a holiday sale, or a July 4 sale, or a spring sale, or something like that, they would be able to, to have those signs up in there. There is one, after, after the introduction, there is one unintended consequence that I did not mean to include in this bill that we can address with amendments at a particular time, but I can, I can discuss that afterwards.
Thank you, Ms. Hare. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Sticking with me is Ms. Miller from OPZ and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. We have our experts in Ms. Rhodes and Mr. Kai-Ziegler waiting in the wings if needed. I thank the sponsor. This was a little bit of a collaborative work. Signs are a surprisingly challenging issue, so we went back and forth quite a bit about how to get that right. You know, no, no bill is, is perfect, and there's definitely some room for improvement, and there are things that we can do if there are additional unintended consequences from this bill to further tweak any changes. But in principle, the administration agrees with the sponsor that a limited number of these types of signs should be allowed on a temporary basis. And so with that, we're comfortable with the bill, looking forward to the coming discussion.
Is there any discussion at this time or questions? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6621. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one online submission on 6621 and one emailed testimony submission on 6621. They were both shared with the council and have been added to the record.
Thank you. We do have one person signed up, and if anyone else is interested, please be thinking of what you might like to say. Ms. Sarah Price, please come forward. And as you know, Ms. Price, you'll have two minutes. Please state your name and address and your client.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Price, here on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Association, which is located at 171 Conduit Street in Annapolis. I would like to thank the sponsor for introducing the bill. As she mentioned, we have a member who had an issue with flutter flags. And I would also like to thank each of you for making time to meet with me to discuss this issue over the past several weeks. We support the bill as written. We appreciate the removal of the prohibition on wind flags, but we also support the efforts to amend the bill, to amend the code into the 21st century. If you drive down pretty much any commercially zoned street in the county, you will see businesses on every street that are in violation of the code. We believe that an overhaul is a bit overdue, and we would support any efforts to create a bill that would allow businesses, that would reflect the way that businesses are currently in operation, and that would allow local entrepreneurs to have a little bit more control over their business space. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else with a view on signs may come down now. Tell us how it relates to the old song about signs for bonus points? Okay, seeing no movement. I try, okay. The public hearing on Bill Number 6621 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6621.
Bill Number 6621: An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Parking, Non-Residential Outdoor Lighting and Sinage, Prohibited Signs, and Temporary Signs.
Okay, and unless there are further questions or comments, we will move to amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One: This technical amendment rearranges the words used in the definition of temporary sign.
Ms. Hare.
This does exactly what it says.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
That would be Mr. Volkey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two: This amendment allows animated signs in the county.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. This amendment does what it says, and I'd move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Hare, a second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Or Mr. Barron, or Ms. Pickard? Why don't you go first?
Can we just have a definition of what an animated sign is, please?
You know, it's been so long since we've had this conversation. For those who have no idea, Mr. Volkey has a longstanding issue with definitions, and so whenever we talk about definitions, it's time to, time to joke. And this is your amendment. So what's an animated sign? I'll just have to ask.
A sign that's animated. Now, in all seriousness, I mean, if we want to make a definition for animated signs, I'm happy to do that. I hope that we could just take them out, and then we wouldn't even have to worry about it. If they're not in the code, then at that point, I don't think we need to define them.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Pickard.
I wasn't being flipped. I really don't understand what, I guess, I wasn't meaning a definition. I mean, can someone give me an example of what would be considered an animated sign as it exists somewhere out in Anarundel County? Why they're, do, do they exist? Do we have animated signs that are technically prohibited in the code, and now we need to, never mind?
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm tracking with what Councilwoman Pickard is asking. Do you want to add something? Oh, go for it. Oh. My understanding of what animated signs are is those signs that like flash messages, you know? So like, if you have an actual sign that's got computerized writing, and it sort of scrolls through, and you've got this message, and then it moves to another message, and then another message, that I understand to be an animated sign.
Madam Chair.
Madam Legislative Council.
Thank you. An example of one is when you're going north on 97. There's a sign on the right-hand side as you're going north that constantly changes everything. That's an animated sign. Thank you.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Administration is not opposed to modernizing the code to allow an animated sign. I think we have some concern about making sure that we are tight enough in the definition to make sure we're achieving what we have, what the sponsor's intending here. I think one of the concerns that OPZ pointed out, and I'll let Ms. Miller speak to it, is some concern that revolving or whirling signs could also be included in this definition. And so the, the concern here is, once you scratch this, do you, you know, or what's the word? Does, do you knock a domino over and now the next one falls? So, you know, I think we're generally comfortable with what you're trying to achieve, Mr. Sponsor, but I think the concern is this might need, this amendment might need to be tightened up a little bit. So if the council accepts it, this bill would come back and we would possibly be coming forward with a technical tweak amendment down the road.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I was just going to say, this particular amendment doesn't impact my constituents. So in terms of modernizing the code, I'm happy to do that. This, I think this is my third sign bill, and looking at the sign recommendations from the work group, I think we have a lot of work to do on, on the sign code in general. So I'm happy for any friendly amendments that make the bill better moving forward.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to piggyback on the questions that Councilwoman Pickard had, because if animated signs are not currently allowed in the county, I know we've given one example, and I think of schools that I've seen, I guess, would those signs qualify as animated? The scrolling ones at the entry to schools?
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. The definition that we've been looking at from the International Zoning Code of an animated sign is a sign that employs actual motion. And it could do that in a number of ways. It can be environmentally created motion as by the wind, or it could be electronically created or mechanically created. So I think it's a pretty broad category, and that is one reason that it would probably benefit to have a definition if we're going to allow this type of sign in the county. It would probably benefit us to have a definition because it is a broad category. I think there are a lot of different kinds of signs that we see out there in the world that could fall within this category. And it might even warrant a discussion of, should all of those types of signs be best treated as permanent signs? Should some of them be treated as temporary signs? And we haven't really gotten to that level of discussion because, again, the original tent of the bill was a little bit narrower. So that's, that's our take on animated signs. Did you want to add?
Yeah, just, oh, am I on? Okay. Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Just to add to that, Ms. Fiedler, the specific type of sign that you talked about with the scrolling message, I think that would fall into the category of electronic message board, which is allowed under the county code. So that is another category of, of sign, which could be similar to what Ms. Schuett was talking about as well.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. So if the person standing out there advertising the sale, spinning the sign around and twirling it, are they, is that now a whirling sign or an animated sign? I agree with you. I think there probably needs to be some more work on this. It seemed to me like just taking this out, because it seemed like we already had some animated signs. I mean, the idea of anything employing motion, those electronic message boards, whether they're a sign or a message board, they certainly employ motion when people are driving by. So I, I'm happy to revisit this, but I'd like to see this come out. And then if we want to put a definition back in, I'd be open to that down the road.
Ms. Fiedler.
I accidentally kept this up, but I will say I appreciate the animated conversation on this topic, and I appreciate where you're going, Mr. Volkey, but I won't be able to support it this evening based on the conversation, so thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment or a joke? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three: This amendment removes the limit on the number of temporary signs allowed on a private property.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. I was just remarking with Councilwoman Pruski that we need to work on a definition bill next on animated signs. But on this one, I am grateful that Ms. Lacy and I have joined together as cosponsors on this particular amendment. This would remove the limitation on the number of temporary signs on private property. I think that this limitation actually violates what the Supreme Court has said about what signs are and speech and the ability of people to speak on their own property. So that was the reason that I put in this amendment, and I don't want to speak for Madam Chair as to her thoughts on it, but that was the reason I moved forward with it.
I'll just add that I, I agree broadly about the first amendment concerns. There may be some reasonable limitations that could be imposed on the number of temporary signs, but I feel that language is too broad in this bill, so that's why I cosponsored it. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration is opposed to this amendment. We think the limitation is reasonable. We are concerned about an unlimited number of temporary signs that have the potential to create visual clutter, driver distraction, and generally devalue the, the look and feel of a particular area. So our, our position is, we do believe businesses should be able to put up some temporary signs to attract business, and we think the, the limit in Councilwoman Hare's bill is reasonable.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. So this gets a little bit to the unintended consequence that I had mentioned at the beginning, where it was certainly not my intention to trample on any free speech issues, and particularly, I know this comes up a lot in, during election time periods when people want to put campaign signs in front of businesses and things like that. And so limiting it to four could certainly be a problem for businesses. In talking with the Office of Law, it's my understanding that other jurisdictions have addressed this issue by removing the limit on the number of signs for a marked period of time before an election, so say the 45 days or the 60 days before the election, and that the rest of the year, the limit on signs comes in. Having spoken with a few people, I do think some limit on the number of signs most of the year makes sense. But, but again, also, you know, open to friendly amendments if, if the rest of the council thinks that no limit is, makes more sense. But for me, I think having some limit most of the year, but looking at lifting it just before that election time period solves both problems of not being too cluttered, but also not getting a foul of anybody's free speech problems. I don't have an amendment for that tonight, but in the event that this amendment does not pass, I will bring that amendment at the next meeting.
Any other comments? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I go back to a conversation, Ms. Miller, that we had quite a while ago, when I was also looking at similar legislation, and the hangup that I had was actually this very, very area. And the, you'll have to correct me if I'm, if I am right, or confirm if I am right, but the concern was that we do not allow these types of signs now, and there are currently businesses that do utilize them. So if we allow them in the county, but don't put some kind of limitation, the thought is that the clutter situation would happen. Is that, I know, Mr. Barron, you've stated that as well. Am I remembering our conversation correctly?
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Yes, you are. That was the conversation. I'll just add on to that, that we do get calls from citizens sometimes complaining about signage and the cluttered look that sometimes results. And those are difficult with us with relation to temporary signs because our code right now doesn't limit the number. We have been able to enforce and get the owners to remove those signs in some cases based on the definition as written now, which includes some time limits. But, you know, it, it leads to frustration by a lot of members of the community out there because we can't do anything about the cluttered look, but the code right now makes it very difficult for us to address that problem. So that's echoing what Mr. Barron said. That's kind of our concern about having an unlimited number of signs on any one property.
Anyone else? Ms. Pickard.
Madam Chair, thank you. Allison Pickard, District 2. In regard, just, is there state law regarding election signage? Because I was always under the impression that you could put out your signs 45 days in advance of the election. They had to come down a week or 10 days after the election. Is that something that's in state code? Clearly isn't necessarily in our county code. Or maybe it is, and I don't, it's not here.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. That is a county code provision. So that is really encompassing the definition of temporary sign right now, that it's a sign that is posted seven days before, I'm sorry, 60 days before an event, and then taken down seven days after. So it's, it is related to the election right now, and that's where those time limits come from.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, so now we're adding, flutter flags are now temporary signs, and so now they can be up so many days before an event? Or we're saying flutter flags are just allowed? This bill is really confusing.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. This bill would eliminate the relationship of the sign to an actual event or regulate the, it would not regulate the content of the sign, but it would put a limit on the duration of it to 260, 260 consecutive day periods.
duration of it to 260 consecutive day periods.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 3.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Tpersky.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 3 has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 4.
Amendment Number 4. This amendment removes the time limit on how long a temporary sign may be displayed.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Again, this amendment, sort of self-explanatory when you read the language, similar concept, the idea that, I think that this has a constitutional problem when you start to say how long people can put up their signs on private property.
I'm moved to adopt.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barron.
Pete Barron with the administration. Similar opposition to the previous amendment. We believe the, there needs to be some reasonable limits, and it's a tough balance to strike, but we're comfortable with the bill.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. This, much like the prior one actually, is kind of where the bill started, and so this back and forth is kind of how we came to this, the number of signs and the timeframe and things like that. So same, same comments as before. I think a different amendment that would address specifically the election types of events would also handle this piece. So, yeah, that's all.
Okay, well, I'll have a question for the sponsor of the bill. One thing about, when we're talking about temporary versus permanent signs, I don't think the bill makes any distinction on the type of property, whether it's residential use or commercial use or institutional or, you know, any, anything else like that. And I would feel much more comfortable with a time limitation on commercial property, but residential property is so linked to free speech that it really, I think you have to really carefully consider what limits we can be applying. And I can think of, you know, some pretty offensive signs that I've seen, and yet they stay up forever, and no one seems to have complained. As far as I know, nothing seems to happen. If we don't also have an enforcement piece related to that time period, you know, that's, that's going to leave us in a place where we can't enforce the law, so it would also compound the problem. What's, well, if you have any remarks in response, you're welcome to.
Thank you. Jessica Hare, District 7. I was just going to ask Planning and Zoning, because I think there are some distinctions about size, signs from zone to zone already, so there are some distinctions that way.
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Yes, you're correct. The sign does regulate in some, the code does regulate in some sections. It distinguishes between residential and commercial properties. The difference here is this bill is speaking specifically to temporary signs. So the, you know, if it's the desire to allow different time limits for temporary signs on commercial versus residential properties, then that's something that we could discuss. That wasn't part of the discussion today.
Thank you. Jessica Hare, District 7. Ms. Miller, because we did discuss initially, talking about making a temporary sign just for commercial zones, and I think it got a little sticky when we talked about it that way. Would Planning and Zoning have an opposition to, from a residential standpoint specifically, changing the requirements for temporary signs to address this issue of free speech?
I don't think we would have an opposition. You know, we would just want to discuss the thoughts about how long you want to leave temporary signs up on residential properties and on commercial properties.
Okay.
It could possibly be more of an issue on residential properties than commercial, so, you know, it kind of depends on a lot of factors.
For any residential properties, an HOA that prohibits a sign would still sort of take over anything that was in the code anyways, right? If you had some kind of covenants in your HOA? Okay.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District 6. I guess this is a question for Ms. Miller. Would it be possible, instead of just making the distinction by zone, by zoning, instead to make it by the quality of the sign, rather, you know, is this a political, is this political speech versus commercial speech? Or is that?
Pete Barron with the administration. This one might actually be better covered by law, because you're, I think, we're hitting on some of the really tricky issues with sign code.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. In general, we can't do that because we can't regulate the content of the sign. There was a Supreme Court decision from 2015 that kind of kicked off the sign work group that looked at the sign code in the last couple of years, and that case specifically says that you cannot regulate based on the content, so we wouldn't be able to go that way.
Madam Chair, may I follow up? So even making the, like, making the determination whether a sign was commercial in nature versus free speech in nature, that would be considered like regulation by content?
For the most part, again, Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, there is some distinction in some additional regulations that can be placed on commercial speech over other types of speech. I could give you some of those details later. I don't have all that with me, and it's a very nuanced area, so I don't want to.
Okay, so that might just be a little too messy, a method of parsing things out?
It would be tricky, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 4.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Tpersky.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 4 has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5.
Amendment Number 5. This amendment removes the general time limit on how long a temporary sign may be displayed, and instead adds a limit on when a business sign may be displayed.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So this amendment came out of similar thoughts and discussions related specifically to a business. The idea behind it is that a business at any point in a year could have a seasonal sale or just want to promote the fact that they are open for business, even if they are a little bit set back from the street, maybe not as visible to passersby, but also says that you have to be open during business hours. The sign would come in and would go back out at the end and beginning of a business day.
Is there a motion to adopt? So moved. And a second? Hang on a second. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I want to applaud the sponsor for the attempt to thread this needle. Unfortunately, the administration can't support this amendment. We would be concerned about how we would enforce it and how we would explain to the general public when certain signs have to come up or go down. Different businesses have different business hours. It just, it would be a little bit of a logistical nightmare, is our concern with this.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. So if I understand this amendment correctly, you're going to take out the idea that there can be two 60-day periods, so 120 days total in a calendar year, that you would be allowed to have a temporary sign at your business, and instead you could have it every single day of the year, provided that it's during your business hours?
Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Oh, sorry.
Not our amendment, sir.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I think this is a question for the sponsor. Does business hours mean sort of Monday through Friday, 9 to 5? Or if your business is open Wednesday through Sunday, you know, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., do you get Wednesday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
It would be hours that lights are on and retailers could shop.
For that specific business?
Correct, yes.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 5.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Tpersky.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Amendment Number 5 has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 6.
Amendment Number 6. This amendment continues the prohibition on signs painted on the roof of a structure.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'm the sponsor of this amendment. It is meant to do what it says. It looked like that prohibition would be taken out, but apparently there are not that many signs on, painted on the roofs of structures in Anarondale County, but I was thinking that it's sort of like Pandora's Box, and since we've seen the proliferation of other kinds of signs, then we had better cabin this kind of sign before it gets out of hand, and then we really have another lengthy discussion about what signs can be like. So with that, I hope that a colleague will move to adopt. I don't mind seconding my own amendment, but I'd appreciate that consideration.
Allison Pickard, move to adopt Amendment Number 6.
Thank you. I'll second. Mr. Barron and Ms. Hare, you both want to speak to it. Mr. Barron.
Pete Barron with the administration. The discussions that were had on this were mostly around the bow flags or the flutter flags. The administration is comfortable with this amendment. As we have seen, these issues are big, and maybe in the future there will be a roof sign bill, but for the moment, we are comfortable with removing them from this bill, so the administration would support Amendment Number 6.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I was going to say what Mr. Barron said, that this was not the main focus of the bill, and it does not impact the small business I was referring to initially. I think in my conversations with Office of Law, maybe there's one roof sign in the county in recent history or something like that, so it's not a huge issue, so I welcome the friendly amendment.
Any other discussion? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. What is the concern from the administration's standpoint, because you all support it with these roof signs? I understand this proliferation concern that people are going to go up and start painting their roofs. I can't see that happening a whole lot, but I guess I'm just curious. If somebody chose to do that, what's, what's sort of the objection? Who's it bothering?
Pete Barron with the administration. I think from, from what you have seen, there's been a lot of discussion about these. The discussion that we had focused this bill on was related to the flutter flag issue. Honestly, maybe there is a big concern on roof signs. We have not done the homework, so we were comfortable with removing it. If there's a big objection and the council decides to reject this amendment, I don't believe the administration will lose sleep, but we are comfortable with the amendment as it stands.
Anyone else? Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District 6. I actually, I have to say that just in my life experience, and this is one person's personal opinion, I actually find roof signs quite charming. I usually see them on the roof of a barn. Sometimes they're political, and sometimes they're advertising dairy products on the side of a barn, and so I guess it's all a matter of, you know, personal opinion and taste, so I've seen some charming roof signs. That's all I'll just add.
Anybody else before we throw out the entire sign code and give up and despair?
Madam Chair, if I may. It's clear from this bill and the ensuing amendments that the sign code needs a 21st century upgrade. I would like to not be on that workgroup, I'm just telling you about that. But I hope in the interim, until we get to September, when this bill comes back amended, if anyone in my district has a concern with the sign code, speak now, because I'm out after this.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 6.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Tpersky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 6 is adopted.
Okay, time for another deep breath. All right. Bill Number 6621, as amended, will be heard on September 7, 2021, after summer recess. And everyone's homework is to observe signs everywhere you go on summer recess and report back. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3421.
Resolution Number 3421. Resolution approving the declaration of certain unimproved county-owned property located in Glenbernie, Maryland as surplus property.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is Ms. Noonan from Central Services, Mr. Martin from the Housing Authority, and Ms. Nederer from Office of Law. And actually, it looks like I have Mr. Walker. So Resolution 3421 approves the declaration of a .23 acre property at the intersection of Platzer Lane, Maryland Avenue, and Alley 207 in Glenbernie. This is in Council District 2. It's right downtown by the Glenbernie Town Center. With the surplus property designation, the county plans to transfer ownership of the parcel to the Housing Commission of Anarondale County, which has identified a need for the property as additional parking for an adjacent housing authority project. The team here is happy to answer any questions. I know they're all thrilled after listening to that signed discussion. The, to put this into perspective, this is .23 acres. It's a small parcel that the housing authority can put to good use. So with that, hopefully, you will pass the resolution tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Are there any questions from the council?
Madam Chair, if I may. Allison Pickard, District 2. I would just like to commend the county for doing their due diligence to determine that they can surplus this property and that the Housing Commission of Anarondale County can put it to good use. I would hope that everyone would support this transfer tonight, and thank you.
Any questions, comments? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3421. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions of testimony.
Okay. We do not have anybody who signed up in advance, but if you'd like to speak, please move forward now. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 3421 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3421.
Resolution Number 3421. Resolution approving the declaration of certain unimproved county-owned property located in Glenbernie, Maryland as surplus property.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Resolution Number 3421.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Tpersky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3421 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3521.
Resolution Number 3521. Resolution approving estimates of the annual cost of providing health insurance benefits and the employer subsidies used to determine the rates for certain participants under the county employee and retiree health benefits program.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is Ms. Bedowski, our Personnel Officer, from our Budget Office, Mr. Teroux, and from the Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. Resolution 3521 is the annual health care cost resolution to approve the annual cost estimates, employer subsidy, and the rates for health insurance benefits under the county's offered programs. We do have one amendment to offer at the appropriate time. The amendment clarifies that the actual retiree health care costs will be equal to or lower than the amounts listed within the resolution as the contract. or lower than the amounts listed within the resolution as the contract is still being finalized. Each year, the Office of Personnel works with a health consultant to determine the estimate of annual healthcare costs for each of the medical plans. The consultant reviews the claims data for the most recent calendar year, the most recent previous calendar year, obviously, that would be 2020, and overlays assumptions for trends and pharmacy costs and projects the cost per plan for the upcoming calendar year. Layered on top of that, this year was the issuance of an RFP for medical and pharmacy benefits effective for January 1st, 2022, for active and under 65 employees, retired employees. The competitive RFP provided for some administrative cost savings for the county over the next several years, although the costs of claims are projected to be consistent. This resolution reflects the annual cost for the new plans for 2022. The county will transition to a new vendor, Aetna, and will offer employees and under 65 retirees two plans, a national HMO, EPO, and a PPO. The rates reflect no change in rates for about half of the employees and the under 65 population for 2022. Also, this year, a competitive procurement process was conducted for the over 65 medical and pharmacy benefits. The rates for the over 65 Medicare Advantage programs are not to exceed rates. The evaluation committee has completed its review, but final award and signed contract are still pending. However, based on the evaluation of the financial packages proposed, we expect the rates to be less than the 2021 rates and are therefore comfortable with the not-to-exceed amount provided in the resolution. I am joined by our experts from Personnel and Budget and Law. If the council has any questions, we ask that you adopt the amendment, which will be discussed at the appropriate time, and pass this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on resolution number 3521. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions of testimony.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing. I do not have anybody signed up to testify tonight. If you'd like to, please come forward now. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on resolution number 3521 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number 3521.
Resolution number 3521. Resolution approving estimates of the annual cost of providing health insurance benefits and the employer subsidies used to determine the rates for certain participants under the county employee and retiree health benefits program.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This amendment adds a statement as to Medicare Advantage rates for calendar year 2022. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment clarifies that the cost of Medicare Advantage coverage for retirees will not exceed the values listed within the resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move Volkey.
And a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
Thank you. Our resolutions can be amended and voted on in the same evening. Therefore, we'll proceed to call the roll unless anybody has a comment, question, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number 3521 as amended.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 3521 as amended is adopted.
Thank you all. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number 3621.
Resolution number 3621. Resolution in support of the county executive of Anarondale County promptly entering into an agreement with Robert A. Pascal Youth and Family Services, Inc., to lease and make fully available county-owned property located at 41 Community Place in Crownsville, Maryland.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This resolution is pretty thorough, self-explanatory, and gives a rich history. I know that there are a significant amount of folks in the audience who came out to speak tonight, so I will reserve my comments for after the public hearing.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think as the sponsor stated, there are a number of folks from the public. The administration is comfortable in holding our comments until after we hear from the public.
Do any of my colleagues have a burning question? Ms. Pickard.
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we will take the hint and open the public hearing on resolution number 3621. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any online submissions of testimony.
All right. We do have, I have 15 people signed up. Since we have four chairs, I'm going to call groups of four. And the order in which I call you is the order in which we request you speak. When you are seated and it's your turn, you'll have two minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record. First, Bruce Bariano. Second, Catherine Bonin-Contri. Third, Gillian Tomlin. Fourth, Cindy Amadori. Do we have Cindy Amadori? Doesn't look like it. Mr. Troy White. All right, we'll stop there and we'll go with the people that we have. Mr. Bariano.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. For the record, my name is Bruce Bariano. I am a pro bono lobbyist registered with Anarondale County on behalf of Pascal. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and very strong support of this resolution. I would like to thank the sponsor, the co-sponsor of this resolution for their introduction of this resolution, and thank the committee, the council, should be in advance for its consideration of this matter. This is a very important, a very serious matter. It's a matter of public access to care. That's what this whole issue is about. Access to care today, yesterday, needed immediately for the benefit of the county. Pascal is extremely appreciative and always will be of the unanimous vote by this council, giving it a 15-year lease, doing the very important, great work that they're doing for the citizens of Anarondale County. Some of you on this council have visited Pascal, and we thank you again for having done that. And you've seen firsthand what Pascal has done with the county building that just sat there, useless. It was turned into a very important center of providing critical behavioral health care services for the residents of Anarondale County, at no cost to the county whatsoever, but only by Pascal privately. Pre-COVID, we had serious discussions with the county. Some state legislators involved themselves in that urging that the building right next door, 41, would be made available to Pascal to assist them in their expanding need for beds and providing services. For those of you that have seen the property, they were built together to be used together. They functioned together previously, but not again.
Thank you, Mr. Bariano.
Thank you.
Your time has expired.
Okay.
Ms. Bonin-Contri?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you and good evening to all the council members. Just as Mr. Bariano stated, we need more mental health crisis beds. There are many, many substance use providers in the county. But what I need to make clear is that we are a licensed mental health crisis bed provider, and the state stipulates that you can only have 16 mental health crisis beds in any one physical address. So despite the fact that we were given a wonderful building, and thank you for that, I am eternally grateful, there are more mental health beds needed. There are people behind me that are going to explain more about that in a moment. But I wanted to make another point. We did talk about this pre-COVID. We've been asking for this building for a long time. It is not new that this is a request from us. We have looked at two things that were very important about it. The number one thing being an elevator. Originally, we thought we could put an elevator in our current building. We cannot. It is not possible. It's over a million dollars by all the estimates. We would have loved to, but it's not possible. Meanwhile, there's a building right next door that will allow us to put 16 more life-saving mental health beds into it, and it has an elevator accessibility for all. You may hear that others want to make a service center, a medical center. I've heard a few things floating around from folks other than who are here tonight. And frankly, that's just not possible. It's not possible for that to happen because there's no transportation to and from the building. Pascal brings people in on vans. It is meant for residential. We are not like other providers. We are a crisis center. It's a drop-off facility. It is secluded. It's perfect for law enforcement. Nobody else will ever be better in that facility. There's no parking, by the way, because Pascal already has it for the whole entire place.
Thank you, Ms. Bonin-Contri. And I believe we were to have Gillian Tomlin, but we have...
Patrick Maddox.
And please do state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name's Patrick Maddox, 156 Bay Circle, Earlville, Maryland. I'm here on behalf of Project Chesapeake, and Gillian had a death in the family, so I'm covering for her today. I'd just like to speak of, on behalf of Project Chesapeake, we have three inpatient treatment centers in Anarondale County. We also have two outpatient treatment centers in Anarondale County. And we provide, we work really hand-in-hand with Pascal. We really rely on them. They rely on us. We work really well together. In the years that I've been working for Project Chesapeake, I do a little bit of everything. And I work directly with mental health psychiatric rehabilitation specifically. I also work in our inpatient treatment centers. You know, on a regular basis, we get phone calls, people asking for help who have high levels of needs, who are in crisis, who need stabilization, have a number of issues, including substance use treatment and mental health, primarily mental health needs. And we see that regularly on a daily basis. And it's difficult for us as an organization when, you know, we are trying to place individuals into these beds, but there's a longer waitlist. And it creates issues across the board with our own services that we provide. But we really rely on them. We find they've done fantastic work in the community. We really, really value our relationship with them. And we've worked well with them in the past. We know that this would really benefit not just Pascal, but the community at large. And it would do a tremendous, it'd be a tremendous benefit to the folks that really need this help, that we see calling desperately needing this help on a daily basis. And it would just, it would provide relief in that capacity, and we would be really grateful for that.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to call up the next group of people.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I, actually, I have a question for some of the panel, if that would be allowed?
We don't normally question our panels of public witnesses.
We have in the past, so I just wanted to ask.
Okay. Next, Melissa August, Dawn Klakota, Klakoka, pardon me, Tanisha Pearson, and Diane Bear. Ma'am, make sure your mic's on with the red light or use the other one. Thank you. Please state your name and address. You'll have two minutes.
Melissa August, 5 Silapona Court, Annapolis, Maryland. Yeah, so I am actually in the field of addiction medicine, and I have been for about six years now. But I'm also an Annapolis resident and a person in long-term recovery. So with all of that, I just, I really think that Pascal provides instant access to care. So the program that I work for, similar to Project Chesapeake, is a residential program. And Pascal really bridges the gap. So people are getting direct access to a safe place where they can begin treatment, whether it's mental health, substance use, co-occurring. And I think Catherine really touched on a point that's also very relevant, especially now, that the mental health crisis due to the COVID pandemic, and I see that in my daily life. I get calls often for people who are not abusing substances but are having severe symptoms, can't function in their everyday life, and need to be given a safe place to go, a place like Pascal. And if there's not a place like Pascal, then these people, homeless, or they have no place to go before, like I said, Pascal really bridges the gap for them to then get to the next step, to the service that they need. And we also, I work for Avenue's Recovery Center, and we also utilize Pascal often. There's people that want to come to our program for 60 days, and we don't have immediate opening. And I'm able to call them to get that person placed, like I said, so they have a safe place, and then they can transfer to us.
Thank you, Ms. August.
Thank you.
Okay, next people on the list are Brianna DeShays, Anthony Anderson, Patrick Kennedy, and Daryl Diggs. Brianna DeShays.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brianna.
Please state your name and address for the record, and then we'll go in order according to the list. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Brianna DeShays, and my address is 2922 Boyd's Cove Drive in Annapolis, Maryland. I am here to just talk about my experience with Pascal. Prior to Pascal opening, it was a real difficult situation. We had to send people who were looking for treatment to Baltimore City and wait for a bed at Mercy and places like that. You couldn't get it on the weekends. You couldn't get help in the middle of the night. And so I'm speaking from reference. I work for Circuit Court Drug Court as one of the case managers. So, you know, our job is to get people into treatment. And so oftentimes, we need help getting them in right away, and sometimes we can and sometimes we can't. So since Pascal's here, we've had people who have graduated come into court. The judge sees them. You know, they've stopped taking their meds. They've gotten away from their network, especially like what Missy said. People in COVID were really affected and having difficulty and needed crisis interventions and were self-destructive. And so typically, they would go to jail. And that's not the appropriate place. So whether it's veterans, pregnant women, IV drug users, all of the, you know, the aging population, people with disabilities, they're able to accommodate all those people, and not like tomorrow, like right now. So when I call and I have somebody and they want help, they want it now. And then my other experience is I provide Sober Living in Annapolis for adult men suffering from addiction. We've been open since 2013. And, you know, when we have people who've been living there, been clean and sober, and they have same situation, they stop taking their meds, or they relapse, or they need to get back on their medications, they're able to go in there and be seen right away. And then the follow-up isn't just like they see them and push them into treatment. You can, they can maintain their mental health, their VIVITROL, their medication appointments, their therapy, everything is available to them ongoing. And through telehealth has been really great for people keeping appointments and maintaining, you know, their medications. But the biggest thing is, there's a lot, there are some other avenues to get people into treatment, but you have to go through, you're sending somebody who's impaired or in crisis, and they have to go through so many hoops. And you can just call Crisis, or I'm sorry, call Pascal, and they'll pick them up in the community. They pick people in the community from the courthouse when we need them. They pick them up from Sober Living. I've dropped them off myself from Sober Living. And I just, I can't even, I don't even... even, I don't even know what we were doing before. I just can't see going back. And there is a need for it, because I'm not even exaggerating when I say I call Pascal five times a week, either from Drug Court, or from someone in the community who's been in Sober Living, somebody from the recovery community that will call and say, I need help. And I call them.
Thank you, Ms. DeShays. I think we have Anthony Anderson? No? Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record. You have 10 minutes.
My name is Anthony Anderson, 10535 Crane Highway, Maryland. I would just like to say Pascal is a great place. It's helped me out a lot. For instance, a year ago today, I had a broke hip. I had legal issues. I had no identification card. And so now, today, I have a new hip. I have my legal issues resolved. I got an ID, and that's all thanks to Pascal. Helped me out a lot with that. And I've seen him help a lot of people, and I think it's a great place. And I just wanted to share that. And that's pretty much what I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
All right.
Do we have Mr. Kennedy? Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Patrick Kennedy. 424 Holly Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. I would like to continue to say, it's like what Ms. Brant said, that Pascal has actually helped a lot of people, and I am definitely one of them. You know, when we're at the end of our roads, we have no place else to go. And Pascal was there in an instant to go ahead and come get me and have, provide a place, a bed for me to stay at, and then get the ball rolling to move on to other programs. And Pascal pretty much saved my life because it gave me an opportunity to use my better judgment, or listen to my higher power to go ahead and move on to rehab and to other places. It's just given me the leg up to keep going. And, you know, one day, I would like to actually maybe go there and to work for a place like that in the future. Just living it one day at a time, and I owe it all to Pascal. As far as they picking me up, taking me to get my VIVITROL shots, helping me out with court public defenders, taking me to court back and forth, providing me with the transportation, actually seeing therapists on Doxy. I do that every week. And it's just really helped me out a lot by doing this. I couldn't even begin to help them by doing this at all. This is something that I would do in a minute, and I have, because they have provided me with a lot in my life, and I'm very appreciative. And I would just wish that you guys would go ahead and listen and maybe help them out to do what they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Diggs?
Yes, ma'am.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Darrell Diggs, 244 Douglas Court. I'm a prime example of what they're talking about. I have an invitation. Pascal has came and got me from Mercy Hospital at 2:00 in the morning. I was so grateful for them coming to get me. I had no way of getting there. As we speak, I actually go up and down in steps. I'm on the third floor. And I, like I said, I have an invitation. And I thought maybe it would definitely be great. It would really help out, you know. They have, I see them send a lot of people away, you know. And so because of their condition, that's why I think Pascal would make another, Pascal having another, I can't even say the word. I can't remember the word. I'm trying to say, old facility. If it happened in that facility, it would really be good. You know, that would be able to help out a lot more people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diggs, and thank you to the panel.
Madam Chair, may I just make a quick comment to the panel?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Fiedler.
I just want to thank each of you for coming out this evening, touring the current facility and hearing the stories from the folks who are running it. It's very different from hearing your story from you. And it takes a lot of bravery to come out and make public testimony on a topic that is so sensitive and so personal. And you all are putting in the work, and I applaud everything that you do every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. And before I call the final couple of folks who are signed up, I do have to apologize to Ms. Fiedler, because I was wrong about the rule when she wanted to question one of our speakers, and I think because of COVID, which we really didn't do that when anybody would testify to us on Zoom. So I apologize. I'm rusty in that area. So I don't know who it was you wanted to call back to question, but you can go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Ms. Bonn Country, if you don't mind coming back, I was going to call one more person from your panel, but it looks like you stepped away, so I will. Oh, Mr. Bariano, there you are. You've moved seats.
And before you question them, let me just ask, the remaining two people on the list are Tyler Stewart and Jen Klotz. Are they here? And that way, you can just have a seat at the table, and we'll be able to go to your testimony after Councilwoman Fiedler's question. Go ahead.
Thank you. You all provided a very descriptive packet on your current crisis stabilization center, what you've done there, and what you would hope to do at the second facility if given the opportunity. What, if you could just explain for the record, what would you be able to do with that facility if you were able to expand, and how quickly could you turn that around?
Thank you. So our current facility, we renovated in just at 100 days, working round the clock. It's a 16,000-square-foot building. The building that we are asking for, which is of course connected to the one we're in now, is similar in its, as you can see by the photos that I've attached there in the packet. It has significant renovations that need to be taken, just like the building that we were in now. It needs fire suppression, plumbing, new bathrooms. It needs to come up to code with electrical, HVAC, all, everything that was the case in our current building would need to be done in Building 41. And we are fully prepared to do it in the same amount of time and have it be ready with mental health crisis beds before December 31st would be our target. We've talked about it extensively. As you can see, we had an architectural plan drawn up. It is the third page from the end in your packet. It outlines actually what we would do in each wing of the building. I know there has been, like I said, a little bit of discussion about what could be, what might be, you know. Maybe there'll be, you know, an alternative idea for this building. It's been floating around like that for years. And frankly, it's filled with a bunch of furniture. It is a storage facility. The bathrooms are not being flushed. And if that happens, as you know, the plumbing goes stale very quickly. So we would like to bring it back to life as quickly as possible and save other people's lives.
May I just ask one follow-up question? So you've touched on this, I think, in your testimony. And then again, here you mentioned the mental health crisis beds. Can you explain, out of all of the providers that exist in the county, why Pascal is the only one that has, is licensed by the state in the county to provide residential?
So we are licensed for mental, they're actually called Residential Crisis Services, or RCS, which is the same thing as mental health crisis beds. There's one other provider, but they don't do it in a crisis center environment with that adequate drop-off for law enforcement and crisis response, and the police and the EMS, and what have you. The difference is really dramatically that. The other provider that has a license, or the only one of two, is doing it in a residential setting with very few beds in houses. And frankly, there are a lot of problems with trying to ever entertain the idea of running 24/7 drop-offs in a residential neighborhood. It's just not appropriate. We have many, many reasons why this is the right fit and the right place for another 16 mental health crisis beds in one large crisis center where we can provide all of the other medical needs for them that they have.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart, you have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tyler Stewart. I live at 6 Main Avenue, Southwest. I am here, I'm actually a person in long-term recovery, and I also represent Amicus Recovery Centers. We have 16 different centers in five different states. We have three here in Maryland, and we're actually about to open like three or four more, and detox. I personally deal with Pascal. Another lady said five times a week. I did probably five to 10 times a day. While I was sitting out here in the audience, I was messaging the intake number twice to two separate people. I do community outreach, and I am all throughout the state. There is no other facility that is like this, especially with mental health. If they do not, if they are not suicidal with a plan, it is so hard to help them, especially when it's mental health first. Pascal takes all the obstacles out, and my phone's on 24 hours a day, right? There's 15 minutes of willingness when you got to catch somebody when they're ready for recovery. For me personally, if I don't catch them in that time, like, they could die. I mean, I'm not God, but I can provide the resources and take the loopholes of going to the hospital, jumping through hoops, law enforcement call me. We have personal relationships with case management everywhere throughout the state, and nowhere is like Pascal or gives the care. I've personally dropped numerous people off. I've gone there and shared my testimony with people. It is just an amazing thing. And recently, they've actually had to deny a couple of my people just due to lack of capability of being able to help them with the elevator. So it is just an asset that is needed. And honestly, I wish this was in every county. So with that, I appreciate you guys taking the time and letting me come out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stewart. And I thank everyone again who has come to speak and share your personal experiences and stories. And if there's anybody else who would like to testify on this resolution, now is the time to come down to do so. I've called every name, but I don't think anybody new has walked in, for those who had signed up. Okay, Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Ms. Bonn Country, I just have two questions for you. Given the testimony that I've heard, how many folks, if you don't have this space, how many folks are you currently having to turn away with not having the beds in the elevator?
We ran some statistics on this just recently, and it's about 15 to 27 people on the waitlist every day.
Okay. And the current space that you have, I know the council approved via legislation here, the lease renewal on your current space, but the original lease, did you have to go through any kind of like RFP process procurement with the county? How did you come about to have that initial space?
We did not.
You didn't?
The RFP process, the building was just sitting vacant, just like this one. And the county executive made the initial foray to go ahead and give us the building for three years. And based upon that, we were able to do everything else and came in front of you not so long ago to get that lease extended to 15 years.
So that's the same situation you're looking to do now? Okay.
Same situation.
Thanks. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Ms. Bonn Country or Mr. Bariano, I don't know which of you is more appropriate to answer this question, but I am curious about other uses for this space. If you're aware of anybody else who's looking to use it, if you've heard from the Health Department, if you've heard from any of the other agencies, and if you haven't heard of it, do you have any idea why it is that there's not more maybe support so far from the administration for you getting it?
Two years to expand and to move into that building. At our own expense, no taxpayers' money has ever been used for Pascal. We know they're county buildings. We know all the improvements that were made after the 15-year lease are going to newer to the benefit of the county. So it's a great deal for the county from a physical standpoint of having one of its buildings rather than just standing there unused, not for the benefit of the citizens, to be upgraded completely and quickly and utilized. Since we've pressed the matter respectfully, all of a sudden, the Health Department now has an idea, and they want to use the building, either as a medical center, or as a community drop-off, a service center. And extremely respectfully, that's just, it's ridiculous. It really is ridiculous. I'll tell you why it's ridiculous. You all know the location. You know, the traffic signage in the roads coming off of General's Highway are very unusual and cannot handle a great deal of traffic. Secondly, when we were given the 15-year lease, the permit also, where it gives us all the parking for employees, for residents, for drop-offs. So there's no additional parking, you know, for any other use. And the other thing, which you all know, and it's just wonderful for the county. Crowesville is a very unique area. It's an area where the community is comfortable with mental health and behavioral health situations. It's isolated. It's not in residential areas. There has never been a peep against not just Pascal, but even the other entities that are either on the state property or the county property. So to use that building for non-behavioral health, mental health service, it's just illogical. I say that respectfully. It's illogical, given the realities and the politics and everything like that, when a building can be used immediately, at no expense to the county. And what are we all here for? We're all here to serve the citizens of Anarondle County. Really. Not politics, not anything else. Provide service. And there's an access to care problem. There really, really is. And we would appreciate being able to that. We've proven how good we are and how dedicated we are to the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bariano. Okay. Everyone's done? Okay, this panel is dismissed. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
The public hearing on Resolution Number 3621 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3621.
Resolution Number 3621, Resolution in Support of the County Executive of Anarondle County, Promptly Entering Into an Agreement with Robert A. Pascal Youth and Family Services, Inc., to Lease and Make Fully Available County-Owned Property Located at 41 Community Place in Crowesville, Maryland.
Ms. Fiedler, and then I'll call on you, Mr. Barron.
Thank you.
Since you both reserved earlier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I did reserve my earlier comments. And the reason that I reserved my earlier comments was that I knew I could not compare with the stories and the testimony that were shared here this evening. When I toured this facility, I was awestruck with the work that they are doing to provide critically needed care for people in crisis. And those situations and those individuals, when they are extending an arm, a hand for help, it is imperative that it is grabbed on the other side. So to me, there is no better or no other use of this building that could compare to the timely response that could save a life. And that is why I introduced this resolution this evening. So thank you.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is, we have Dr. Kalina Araman from our Health Department, our Health Officer, Ms. Nancy Noonan from Central Services, Ms. Mickler from Mental Health, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer from Office of Law. And I forgot to mention, Ms. Gray is here in the audience, too, if we have questions from mental health. The administration shares Councilwoman Fiedler's commitment and concern, hearing those stories and the good work that is done. We do share the admiration for the hard work of the people who are going through recovery, and the hard work of the folks who are providing it. That said, we have a responsibility here to the taxpayers and the residents of Anarondle County. The administration asked the council to reject this resolution. We believe that naming a specific private entity to receive a county property to be premature at this point. It's clear that a top priority of... It's clear that a top priority of this administration is to support mental health and to support folks dealing with mental health and substance abuse crises. The care delivered by private providers to address the health and mental health needs of our residents is a top priority. Currently, our county has the most crisis beds of anywhere in the state. It's still not enough. And in Bill 2321, that this council unanimously supported the Pittman administration's effort to extend the Pascal lease for 15 years for their current property. Those are two examples. I'm sure the folks at the table could provide hundreds more of our efforts to deal with health, mental health services. To the property in question, the county is currently undergoing an analysis of this property to determine the best use for the residents and the taxpayers of Anarondle County. After that analysis is complete, maybe Pascal is determined to be the appropriate entity to partner with. Perhaps it'll be another entity. Perhaps the best use will be to keep it for the use of a county agency. We must look at all our needs in a holistic way that balances the multitude of factors. This administration is committed to ensuring that our assets are best used to the benefit of county residents. I've heard a couple of times from Mr. Beriano in particular that the current facility is just used for storage, and it's not being put to use. Well, I think it would be relevant for this county to understand, or for this council to understand that the current use of the property for the past 16 months or so, as Commerce Park renovations have been undergoing, has saved storage costs in the amount of about $2 million for the furniture that is currently there. Had we not had that property, we would have had to find another place to store that furniture, which would have incurred a cost. That's not saying we want it to be a permanent storage center for the county, but in the short term, that was a good solution that provided a benefit to the county property, county taxpayers. We look forward to completing our review to determine what the best use of the Crowesville property is and continuing to work for, work with service providers in the county to address the ongoing needs. I will want to correct the record on one fact that was, I think, stated a couple of times by folks previously, that the county can't use the other building because Pascal has the parking. The lease is clear. The parking is in common, so the parking lot can be used by, if Pascal were to get the second building, it wouldn't be an issue, but if the county determined that another provider or the county agency would be used, we have not given away the county parking lot. So with that, our folks here are happy to answer any questions. I know this is an important issue, and I know folks are passionate about doing the best for our folks in crisis.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. So you all have been in office for almost three years with this study that you're talking about. When did it start? Have there been other agencies or other entities who have approached the county and want to use this space? I'm just curious what the planning has looked like on this and what the timeline's been for that planning.
Thank you, Councilman Volkey. So I'm gonna ask the experts, but I will say, in the initial stages, you know, we did need a place to put the furniture, so I'm gonna ask maybe the, our health experts and if Ms. Noonan has anything to add about how Central Services has been looking at it.
Sorry, you can run it on. There's been some problems with the mic. Sorry.
Hi, Nancy Noonan, Deputy Director, Central Services. We typically, when there's available space in any of the buildings or any empty buildings, we typically ask all the departments if they need it, and if they have any plans coming up, any expansions, anything they need to do. So we started there first, and then if anybody comes back to us, we start to investigate that space planning, that kind of thing, take them out, do tours. It typically takes a while. And then if the county doesn't have a need for it, we do tend to start to look at nonprofits. We get calls all the time, so we don't keep an active list, but we just get calls all the time. We typically, before we do anything, we double-check once again with the county agencies because things change quickly, and then we start to talk to the administration and see if there's anything that's coming up that we don't know about, any needs that will come up, and then talk to the administration about leasing that to someone else or surplusing the actual property. In this case, I think we've, I can't give you the exact amount of time, but I think it's been about 18 to 20 months that we've had this property with the furniture. We've been working on Commerce Park for a while. Various delays, so it's still there. And as Mr. Baran said, we, you know, we avoided spending $2 million to use that space. We anticipate the furniture still being in there for another three months, I think, about, give or take. We're trying to work on that schedule now. So once, once we decide if somebody needs the property, then we either, you know, do it with the county and do space needs, or we work with the administration. But Crowesville's a little different because it's connected to the state. The property surrounding it is the state, so it's all on the sewer system there, and so we have to work with them on that. Also, the last thing is, when we do look at properties that require renovations, this building in particular is on the national, it's, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I want to get the right thing. It's not on the National Registry, but it's, we've been investigating that because it's closed, so we need to look into that when we do repairs and what those repairs would be. So there's some things in this particular building that we may need to meet those needs.
Ms. Hare? Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. So when looking back at the 43 Community Place that was done a few years ago, was all of this whole process done? Because it doesn't sound like this entire process took place when that building was turned over.
It was, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I was actually gonna turn it over to you and Ms. Noonan. That occurred under a previous administration, so I have no knowledge of it, but perhaps one of the folks at the table.
Nancy Noonan, Deputy Director, Central Services. Yes, we did follow this process in the background.
Okay, so you had some kind of a written evaluation?
No, we did not do a written evaluation of the building. No.
So I'm trying, the study that you're doing and the process that you're following, nothing's written down?
It's not a, I'm sorry, it's not a study. When, we just start to talk to the department, so we go department by department, see what they're doing, if they need additional space, and when they don't, then we go to the administration. So there's nothing written down. As far as the evaluation of the building itself, you mean in terms of repairs and renovations that are needed?
Not necessarily. Mr. Baran mentioned that you all are studying the best use for the property and what might be done, and whether there's a nonprofit. I assume somewhere there's like, there's a report, or there's something that's a final product from all this?
Well, I am not aware of a final report from the Schu administration on the designation of 43. For us, currently, what we are doing now, I don't know if we plan to issue a final report in when we make a decision, but we will be able to justify why we're gonna use it for a certain way. So if you're looking for us to provide a report, I'm sure we would be happy to provide to the council our rationale, just like we're doing now, as to why we feel that one service provider is the right provider for a property to be leased. If that lease extends, I think it's past a year, it has to come to the council for approval, just like the other one did, so there would be our opportunity to discuss that. If a county agency determined was the best use, we wouldn't be surplusing the property. However, as you've seen from Mr. Beriano's report, and as is quite obvious from the state of the building, there would have to be capital investments, so that would come before the council, because you would have to determine whether or not to make the investments to bring the property up to code for a use.
I'm just trying to understand, and I'm not trying to trick anybody.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, just can, are you wrapping up?
Yes.
Thank you.
If there was a process before that was followed, and there was some kind of determination that this is the best use for the property, and this is why Mr. Pittman's gonna enter into this lease, I'd like to see it. If there wasn't a specific process that was followed before with a determination that this is the best use of the property, my concern is, why are we saying we didn't have to do it then, but we have to do it now? So that's all. If there is some kind of written report, I would just like to see it.
I would, I am not aware, Pete Baran with the administration, I am not aware of the previous administration providing any kind of report on why a particular county asset was best used in one particular way or another. I am, and I can assure this council, that this administration is committed to having a process that looks at all the varying possible uses to make sure that we are getting the best value, not only for our folks who need help and are in crisis and need health care, but that the county taxpayers are getting the best deal.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I had an original question, but I'm confused by the conversation that just took place because it's a bit contradictory, so I'm hoping you can help me clear this up. When we were talking about the previous administration and not having any type of RFP process or anything documented and on record, I would assume that there isn't anything, but I do look forward to seeing if there was. However, the current agreement for the currently-used building happened under this administration with this health officer, so I don't understand why we are referencing an uncertainty about what a previous administration did, because it didn't happen then. The decision was made under this administration. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, because I got a bit confused with that line of.
I am a little confused by that question. This administration extended the lease, but, Ms. Meckler?
Adrienne Meckler with the Mental Health Agency. Good evening. Thank you. I think part of the question arrived is because of what happened under the prior administration, suddenly, the building was granted to one particular provider, and at that point, other providers expressed some displeasure about the process, and we were not made aware of how that happened. It just was, you know, I was not involved in that. It just was granted to a particular provider. At that point, one provider was gonna threaten legal action against the county, and there was kind of a dust-up. So we tried to, you know, work with the providers, and then it just, you know, everyone just sort of settled down. We were hoping to avoid any kind of similar issue, because other providers have expressed an interest in those properties. It does provide a competitive advantage to have no rent in this county for a substantial amount of square footage, if that's what is determined as the best need, and other providers are interested in having that advantage. So I think the issue is having an open and fair discussion about if, in fact, crisis beds or whatever health service is, you know, wants to be made available there, that opportunity is afforded to other providers, whether it's an RFP process or just a notice that the building is available, or however the county disposes of vacant buildings or unused property. I'm not familiar with that process.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, and then I'll let you answer them. How many mental health crisis beds do we have in Anarondle County? How many mental health crisis beds do we need in Anarondle County? I heard that there are two licensed providers. Is that accurate? And when will the study on the needs and resources be done?
Nellash Kalyanaraman Health. Thank you, Councilman Volkey. So, I'll start off by saying that there's, there are two providers. There's approximately 50 beds total, mental health crisis beds specifically, but I do want to note that there's different types of inpatient services that are provided. So that's just one band. There's also crisis stabilization services, inpatient beds, we have longer-term, so there's a range, what we call the continuum of services, and that's just one category of it. Right now, we see that about 30, somewhere between 37% to 45% of beds are occupied by Anarondle County residents, because all of these beds are available to anybody in the county. I think Ms. Meckler noted earlier that we have the largest number of current mental health crisis beds of any jurisdiction in the state. Same holds true for our substance use to sort of crisis stabilization beds as well. One of the things that, one of the things that I think is really important to recognize is that it is important for there to be, for there to be other services around, for those individuals who are in those crisis beds. And it is challenging, actually, when we are, when we are building more beds, because that's also gonna draw in more folks from outside of the county, and we just have to think about that in terms of ancillary services or wraparound services, and how those are going to be delivered as well, particularly for out-of-county residents.
I have no idea who was first, but Ms. Hare, and then come back to Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just wanted to go back to the conversation a few minutes ago. I'm looking at the lease right now. It looks like it was entered into on April 25, 2019, about four months after Mr. Pittman took office. It is signed by Mr. Ben Burge, who was the then-chief administrative officer for Mr. Pittman. It was an initial term of, it looks like, three years, which then the council voted to extend for 15 years in April. So it, this is why I've been asking if there was a report done or not, because it was, the lease was done, the initial lease for 43 Community Place was done under this administration.
Let me get back to you, because I've been told that the decision was made under the previous administration.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can appreciate that we have the largest amount of beds in the state, and I know that it took some work to get there. Having said that, understanding that we've communicated frequently in, when we sit as the Board of Health and in other scenarios and discussions, there is still a critical need. So to me, it doesn't matter that we have the most beds in the entire state, when we're still turning away folks who are in need, and then they could potentially, and have in the past, not survived that crisis moment. So you can look at it as a success story. I look at it as a work in process and a still-critical need to have more beds available. I want to go back to some of the comments, Mr. Baran, that you made, just to help me understand a little better where the administration is coming from. When we were discussing closures during the COVID pandemic, there was a discussion on the financial impact to restaurant owners, business owners, and how were they going to survive. There were statements made, and I'm not quoting verbatim, but the general statement was, that was made by some colleagues of mine and the administration, was that you can't put a price on a life, and we need to save lives. This is what it will take to save lives. We have a resolution before us that does just that, and the administration is asking that we rewrite the process, create the process, because we have to be concerned with the cost to the taxpayer, when the Pascal Crisis Center, while having free rent, correct, invested nearly $1 million to refurbish a vacant county-owned property that sat relatively empty and quite disgusting inside, and now that facility is saving multiple lives a day. So to me, that, I don't understand why this is a different scenario than, than when we were shutting down businesses to save lives and costing business owners a financial burden.
So Pete Barron with the administration, I did not say the only reason the county is looking at this is to look at just the cost. I did state, and I will reiterate, that we need to make sure that we are providing the best use of that building to provide the best service to county residents and taxpayers. So the cost is part of it, yes, but there are a plethora of services that may be housed there. And I stated at the beginning of my comments that we're opposed to this resolution not because the particular private provider shouldn't get the property. In fact, I stated that after we look at this in the right way, that it may be determined that this private provider is the right recipient of the facility. It may also be determined that another provider is the right recipient of the facility, or it might be determined that a county agency delivering the service directly is the right recipient of the facility. I hope that helps answer the question.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District 2. I've had lengthy conversations about this resolution. I will say, I was approached by the lobbyist for Pascal to introduce a similar resolution, and I was very clear, and will be clear again this evening, that while I would like to urge the administration to evaluate all of our underutilized parcels and properties and office space, to potentially enter into public-private partnerships with all kinds of different nonprofits or service providers, specifically around mental health and addiction services, as we know, we have a rising crisis. I'm not comfortable with choosing as a council to pick one provider and state it publicly. I think this is also, just for the folks that came to speak tonight on behalf of Pascal, again, I applaud your bravery today, but please note, this is a resolution from the council. We have absolutely no authority to direct the county executive and the administration to really do anything. So it's a statement. It's a statement of this public body, and by stating one individual provider, I'm just personally not comfortable with it. I have toured Pascal. They do, they do good work. They are filling a need, but I don't feel it is appropriate as, as the seven of us as a public body to single out one provider. I think they may very well, at the end of the day, after this property is evaluated and the county decides or doesn't, decides to surplus it to the nonprofit sector, they may very well end up with the property. But I believe a process needs to be put in place by the administration. This is not the only underutilized parcel or vacant property that the county currently owns, and I think as far as good government is concerned, we owe it to the rest of service providers and nonprofits to create a process and an evaluation of all of our underutilized parcels. So thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. My fourth question from earlier, and I apologize because I ask so many, it's easy to have forgotten it, so I get it. But the, the question I had before was, when will the study be done? So we're talking about this idea of we need a study, we need a process, all of that, and, and I get that, and I understand my colleagues' comments and concerns. We're coming back in September. We'll be gone through the entire month of August. We're not going to be meeting. Is it possible that we would have the study done by then? Will we know the process? I guess the reason I'm asking is, I certainly want to see this property put to the best use, but I also think, you know, to use a colloquialism, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush sometimes. And so when you have a sure thing that you know will work, and you know it's not going to cost the county money to have to update this facility because Pascal's going to put the money in, there's some value to that. You know, there's something about that that we can look at and say, well, maybe that does kind of make it more, all things being equal, maybe they accelerate up a spot just because of that. So I guess, I just want to understand from a process standpoint, how much longer are we talking in terms of the evaluation, both to come up with whatever this rubric is that you're going to use to decide how you think this should be used in the best way? And then how long will it take you, once you've come up with that, to then select who the person or the provider is that should go into that space? So I don't know who the appropriate person on the panel is to answer that, but that's my question.
Thank you, Councilman, and apologies if we didn't miss the fourth question. I can't give you a hard date. I think we have to look, and it will be determined by, you know, all sorts of factors, right? Like, we're looking at the state of the building, right? So is, do we think that there's a ton of repairs that need to be done? We're getting our health agencies together to talk about what their needs are, and we're coming out of a global pandemic, and what are the needs that the county is facing and what is the best way to deliver them? I would be surprised if by Labor Day, we were able to come to you and say, here it is, we're, we're ready. But people are diligently working, and, and we do understand, to Councilwoman Fiedler's point, that, that speed matters here. So we are trying to move fast.
Madam Chair. May I ask a brief follow-up? Thank you. I understand that, Mr. Barron. Do we not already know the state of the building, considering that we've been storing things in there for anywhere from 21 to 23 months?
I'll ask Ms. Noonan to weigh in on storing stuff in a building is different than it being habitable for folks. We do, we are aware of mold issues in the building, so how extensive that issue is. And Ms. Noonan, if you want to elaborate at all on the condition.
Thanks. Nancy Noonan, Deputy Director, Central Services. We have a high-level estimate in order on what things need to be repaired. So mold, sewer, I think Mrs. Bonaccontri mentioned some of those items, elevator, life safety, so it, electrical, it runs the gamut. The whole building basically needs to be looked at, and it also needs a new roof. So we have an estimate of $10 million. We'd have to go in and do details, depending on what needs to go in there.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have a few questions, too, so I can, you know, follow whatever process you prefer. I think my first question maybe is from Ms. Blair Klassmeyer. With, just looking at the, you know, looking at this building going forward from a legal perspective, is there any, is there any process, you know, in, laid out in the code with respect to, you know, sort of disposing, I mean, I don't want to say disposing of, but you know what I mean, making a new use of the building that might be an outside entity? Is that something that ordinarily would require an RFP? It sounds like it didn't necessarily happen in 2019, but is that something that should have happened? Is that something that is required by code? Do we subject ourselves to legal action if we don't follow that path?
Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. There is no code process for leasing county facilities. That's an executive function, given the discretion of the county executive. It's not unheard of to do it if it seems like it's in the best interest of the county for a particular property that might have a particular use, but it's not required by the code. The only thing that's required is what happened here, sounds like back in 2019, or 2000, oh, this year, actually, I'm sorry, that if the lease exceeds three years, is three years or more, then it has to come before the council to get approved. That's the only thing that's actually required for leased property. And then there's a whole separate, there are requirements for actually disposing of county property in the sense of selling the property.
Okay, thank you. May I ask another question? Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this one is probably from Ms. Noonan, so thank you. And I apologize, I had to step out for a moment. Other than the current storage use, which I do recognize is saving the county a good chunk of change, in your initial inquiries to the departments of the county, are there other departments that have expressed a specific need, say, oh, this property would meet our need to do this or that? Or, you know, what else is kind of in the, in consideration here?
Nancy Noonan, Deputy Director, Central Services. Right now, it's the health agencies, which Mr. Barron alluded to.
Okay. And I apologize if that was while I was out of the room.
And I think I can add, I, just because a county agency expresses an interest also doesn't mean that an administration will agree with that interest. I seem to recall, and I don't want to misstate, but I think the sheriff's office may have expressed interest for canine uses, which is something the administration wouldn't support.
May I ask, actually, I guess my last thing here is probably more of a comment than a question, if that's all right. I think you're probably sensing that there's just a, you know, real conflict. I mean, I think what Pascal is doing identifies and addresses a very real and tangible need that is very immediate. You know, we've all read in the paper over the past few weeks that the opioid crisis actually increased substantially during the COVID pandemic and is possibly still increasing. I don't know exactly where the data is now, but it sounds like, you know, the need that the providers are hearing is significant. And so I think, I'm, I'm not, you know, obviously, however we vote on this resolution tonight is, you know, the executive, the county executive has the discretion to take whatever path they choose, but I do think, and I actually am not sure how I'm going to vote on this resolution tonight. I thought I knew, and then I thought I knew, and, but I think, more than anything, I think just the message that I would, that I wish were this resolution, although there's certainly things about this resolution I like, is just a sense of urgency, because, you know, if, because I think we have, you know, we have a good plan on the table that Pascal brings to the county that, you know, satisfies and would meet a very, very real, concrete, tangible need that, you know, some of the folks in the audience, I think, described very, you know, very articulately, that this is something that you needed at the moment. You can't, you know, this is not something you can wait for. And I think in the, in the bigger scheme of things, you know, we can't wait for it either. And so, you know, if there is another need that the county can identify, you know, it would, it would be great to see something go forward. I guess, you know, I recognize storage is important, but this building has a, you know, has a lot of qualities to it that make it unique to something residential. I mean, it was built for that purpose, you know? You know, if we look, like, historically at the Crownsville State Hospital Center, that whole facility, for all the, all the dark history that goes with it, you know, was filled with beds for mental health needs, obviously not, you know, provided in any manner that anyone would approve of now. But, so it does have that quality to it. And so the idea that, I just, I just would implore, regardless of how this resolution goes down, is to just ask the county executive to move forward on something as quickly as possible, if there's a need that's as urgent as, you know, providing mental health stabilization. I mean, I, this runs in my family, so the idea of having a place where I could take a, a family member in crisis in the middle of the night, to me, is something I've, other than the ER, is, is really pretty amazing. And it's not, you know, it's not, it's, it's very real right now. So just ignore my vote, and please listen to that as my statement on, on how I hope you go forward.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. I echo a lot of what Councilwoman Rodvian said, and I've had family members in this county who have been looking for mental health crisis beds, and you can't get them. They're extremely difficult to get. They're really, really hard. So with that said, I do want to come back, though, to the substance of the discussion we were having earlier. Ms. Noonan, you'd indicated a $10 million estimate to do the work on the building. Do you know what Central Services estimated the costs were to do the renovation on 43 Community Place and what the county thought that was going to cost? I'm just asking this because it seems to me like, again, when we're looking bang for your buck, Pascal undertook all those costs. They did all of that. I haven't, I don't know whether they're asking for anything with respect to this lease, whether they want any kick-ins or not. I see people saying no. But again, that's a, that's a huge benefit if the county's not having to undertake that renovation cost and put that in our capital program or bring it out of your budget, Central Services, to try to improve this facility, which candidly, as Councilwoman Rodvian alluded to, has a challenging history. It also has a lot of asbestos over there. I know that from, you know, hearing things years and years of what's going on at the state facility. So I guess I'm trying to understand, just when we're holistically looking at this and what it's going to cost the county versus what we have a private entity coming in and saying they're willing to pay, do we know what it cost on the previous one? Looking at what we are, you know, projecting on this one, do we have other agencies or other outside groups who are saying, we'll pony up the money to do all these things already? Or do we just have one sort of player who's saying they'll do it? And if that's the case, I'm just trying to understand what we're waiting for.
Nancy Noonan, Deputy Central Services. A whole lot of questions there. I think I, so, no, I do not, no, that's okay. I want to make sure I get them all. I do not have a cost for the first building. I'm not sure if one was put together before my time. And then the second cost is other agents, or other question, other agencies or nonprofits asking. And no, I do not have any data yet at this point on anybody else who, money-wise, who has anything available to put towards a building. I don't think we're there yet.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lot of testimony tonight, and I think that everyone brings valid points to the table. The key question, a couple of points that I do want to make, and I think they favor both sides. Certainly, Pascal has an excellent record. There's no question as far as the services. I do think there was a question raised about a process. I think the administration ought to be very clear, needs to provide a transparent process. Whatever you're going to do, you got to come to the next council meeting, a memo, there has to be something that says how you went about this, because this council will vote on the lease, or whatever happens to that building, right? We ultimately have the say. I think a lot of people get confused because the council sometimes makes a lot of resolutions and make a lot of statements. The county executive has the authority. That's what's in our charter. That's what happens. Now, if there's a process that we want to come up for an RFP or other things, that's a whole nother discussion, but we have something in front of us that we do need to decide, and I think time is the limit. At some point, we got to get rid of that furniture. You know, I know there's other county buildings, but there probably needs to be some movement, you know, to decide, and I know you don't have that answer right now, but hopefully we can get that. So I guess my, my final statement is, if we can get a timeline, like, is it January of next year? Is it, you know, whatever? What is that going to go through? And then from the Central Services part, you know, what is a fair and balanced way? I don't know what Baltimore County does, but maybe there's a, a way that we choose and that it's brought forward, that Dr. Kay says that after all the reviews, mental health services is the top thing. I could tell you right now, furniture storage is not my top thing, right? Like, and I know we all agree to that. We can walk out of this room right now, but I think all of us want to get to a point, right, where we get answers. I mean, that, that's what this is about. And so, again, I just implore everyone to kind of sit down, see if we could work this out, and I know we've talked about that, but I want to make sure that we do have that process soon, and we have a timeline, because people, you know, want to know what's going on for the benefit of the public and everybody here. So I'll finish with that. Thank you.
Councilman Pruski, Pete Barron with the administration. I think we can, your points are well-taken. I think we can answer one of the questions. Well, first, I think we all agree, permanent furniture storage facility is not the best use of this property. The Commerce Park renovations are completing soon. I actually think we expect, Ms. Noonan, about three months, and the, the facility is cleaned out of, of the furniture in the county. I can assure you, has no plans to put new furniture in there.
Ms. Fiedler. Did, did Councilman Volkey have, his flag was up before me.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just, in kind of summarizing where I am this evening and hearing this discussion, my belief that we should move forward in, in support of this resolution is unchanged this evening. It's unfortunate that the administration's comments were, one, to request us to reject this resolution, considering the urgency and the critical need for crisis beds. I do understand the need and interest for more discussion from my colleagues here, and perhaps the administration will come back. If we delay this vote this evening, after talking to some, some more council members and ongoing conversations, we'll come back with a different position in the future.
So I do want to make a motion. I don't want this to be rushed. At the same time, I do want it to be rushed because of the seriousness of the, the matter, but I am, I'm willing to wait until we come back after our recess to continue this conversation. So I would like to motion to hold the vote this evening and cast the vote or return with a vote on our September 6 meeting.
Volkey, second.
Well, our September 7 meeting, but.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the role on the motion?
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Prousky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Resolution 3621 until the September 7 meeting has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I don't suppose you need me to repeat that part, that we will then hear Resolution Number 3621 at our September 7 meeting. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3721.
Resolution Number 3721, Resolution Approving the Nomination of a Member to the Anarundel County Human Relations Commission.
Mr. Barron.
Pete Barron with the administration. We're on 3721? I'm sorry. Joining me, or sticking with me, is Ms. Lori Blair Klassmeyer from the Office of Law. Resolution 3721 appoints Catherine Laurel Edwards to the Human Relations Commission for the remainder of a term ending November 17, 2023. Ms. Edwards is an extremely motivated individual with a special interest in homelessness. She has worked for the Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition and the Annapolis Lighthouse Shelter in various capacities. She is an incredibly, she is incredibly invested in helping her county and community and has said it would be an honor to serve on the Human Relations Commission. She lives in the county and resides in Council District 6, in Councilwoman Rodvian's district. You should have your resume, her resume in your packet. We're happy to answer any questions at this time, but this is to fill a term that was vacated earlier.
Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. I just want to vouch for Ms. Edwards. She is a lifelong Anarundelian and a lifelong Anapolitan, and I think she's very committed to the, the mission and the type of work that the Human Relations Commission looks to, looks to serve, so I hope you will support Ms. Edwards' nomination.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have your flag up? No? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Resolution Number 3721.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Prousky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3721 is adopted.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, September 7 at 7:00 p.m. You can find important information about this meeting on the council website at aacounty.org. Enjoy the summer.